Folks, if you would, please bear with us just a few minutes. We're waiting on one person that's not made it here yet, so just give us a few more minutes, okay? The October 20 regular scheduled meeting of the Carter County Commission is now in session. I respectfully ask that all commissioners and members of the audience, please turn off your cell phones at this time. Mattis Clark, call roll please.
Peter Keater.
Here.
Willie Campbell.
Here.
Jerry Crawford.
Here.
Nancy Brown.
Here.
Ahil.
President.
Al Meehan.
Here.
Beth Pugh.
Ronnie Trivitt.
Here.
Charles Montanen.
President.
Elsie Testor.
Here.
Isaiah Grunstadt.
Here.
Danny Ward.
President.
Ross Garlet.
Here.
Timothy Hogan.
Here.
Bobby Deacon.
President.
Randall Jenkins.
Here.
Larry Miller.
Here.
John Lewis.
Here.
Ray Lyons.
Here.
Sonia Koller.
President.
Scott Sillman.
President.
Cody McQueen.
Here.
Robert Carroll.
Here.
Robert Goff.
Here.
Juan Perez.
Thank you, Mattis Clark. We do have a couple of special guests with us tonight. Bruce Hendrick, pastor of Oak Street Baptist Church, and also Savannah Egan. Savannah is a junior 4H member at Unaca High School. Most recently, she was recognized as a member of the fifth place state 4H forestry judging team. She is also actively involved in 4H wildlife judging, where her team placed third in state competition. Savannah is also a Tennessee 4H Honor Club member and participates in 4H activities such as public speaking, leadership, and citizenship. She competes in the Food Science Project on the state level. Savannah has also acted in FFA, where she served as a local and regional officer. This evening, Bruce will lead us in our opening prayer, and then immediately thereafter, please remain standing, and Savannah will come forth and lead us in the pledge of the flag. Bruce?
Father, we thank you for the privilege to come to you in Jesus' name. We thank you for Carter County. Thank you for the state of Tennessee. We thank you for the United States of America. What a privilege it is to be a part of this great heritage. We thank you for the folks in this room that make our county government strong. We pray to bless them upon them, give them wisdom in all that they do, and we pray that in the end, this will be a great place to live and work, even better than before. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bruce, and thank you, Savannah. At this time, I would ask that all elected county officials and any other agents please stand. Let's give them a round of applause for this fellow. Keith Hart, Director of the University of Tennessee Extension Office, received his Bachelor of Science in Agricultural Economics and Rural Sociology from the University of Tennessee Knoxville in 1971. Keith received his Master of Science in Extension Education from the University of Tennessee in 1980. Keith began his career on July 1, 1971, in Johnson County as an agricultural extension agent and worked with farmers in 4H youth development. He began working in Carter County in November of 1975, where he has served as county director and agricultural agent, serving local farmers, producers, and homeowners. He has worked with 4H forestry and prop judging teams over the years. In fact, he was my prop judging coach in 1977. His mentoring enabled me to achieve the highest score in the state-level competition that year. Since, many of his teams have taken national honors. This type of work has made a positive difference in the lives of countless youth in Carter County. Keith has worked extensively with the Carter County Cattlemen's Association, Carter County Tomorrow, Farm Bureau Board of Directors, and numerous vocational programs. He was instrumental in the formation of the East Tennessee Nursery Association, bringing new and unusual plant material to the area. Keith worked closely with the Chamber of Commerce and like the Fraser Fur, Carter County's Community Christmas tree. Over the past 15 years, Keith has been instrumental in the coordination of educational tours, which has normally engaged 40 to 50 nursery producers and extension agents. He has enjoyed working with mass media to carry out educational programs. However, Keith's expertise was working with local producers to provide research-based information to enhance horticulture and plant production in Carter County. October 31 is Keith's last day on the job. He has been a very valuable asset to this county and all its citizens. I have the utmost appreciation for his 43 years of dedicated service. Please help me welcome Keith Hart.
Folks, thank you all. It's been my honor and privilege to serve the folks of Carter County. We have a diverse county with a lot of different interests, and it's an honor to look at commissioners and the new commissioners here that have taken their time to be here tonight to serve everybody. I don't care if they're from the top of Buck Mountain or Ripshin or the head of Simmerley Creek in Midway to Pine Ridge or Watagal. We have a unique group of people here, and thank you for representing all those interests. Appreciate it. It's been my honor to serve you all.
In 1974, Snap-on Tools of Kenosha, Wisconsin, made a decision to open a Ford shop in Elizabethan to supplement its other hand tool facilities. On a initial startup in August of that year, the total operations consisted of approximately 5,000 square feet of manufacturing space and less than 20 employees. The Elizabethan facility quickly grabbed the attention of the corporate office due to the overall quality of its products, energetic workforce, and the economics of operating the business in East Tennessee. Snap-on saw its first expansion the very next year. Floor space increased by 21,000 square feet, and the workforce quadrupled, bringing the total number of employees to 75. A second expansion in 1981 resulted in 73,000 additional square feet of floor space, 150 new associates, thus 240 total employees. The mid-'90s brought in and flow conditions for hand tool demand. It was a tough time for all U.S. industries, and Snap-on was no exception. Production stabilized after the Y-2K scare, and the company expanded operations yet again in 2004. In 2012, an additional 38,000 square feet was added to the facility. The workforce is now approximately 400 and is ranked as the second-largest employer in the county. More importantly, the Elizabethan facility is the primary hand tool supplier with the United States, and several of their wrenches and ratchets made here are shipped all over the world. Its continued success is a testament to the overall quality of the company's products, exceptional work ethic of its employees, and sound business practices implemented by its professional management team. Plant manager John Carley and all members of Snap-on team are to be commended for their tremendous efforts in making the Elizabethan plant a premier manufacturing facility. Recently, the plant announced it had entered into a partnership with Tennessee College of Applied Technology. Such relations between industry and institutes of higher learning are absolutely necessary for continued economic advancement and community development. On Saturday, October 4 of this year, Snap-on of Elizabethan opened its doors to the public in celebration of a major milestone, its 40th anniversary in Carter County. That day, I had an opportunity to tour the facility, and quite frankly, was pleasantly surprised as to the overall cleanliness and bright lighting found on the shop floor. Throughout my career, I've worked in various production and manufacturing operations, and most don't compare, especially when you're looking at Ford shops and machines. We're extremely fortunate that Snap-on Tools chose to set up operations here. I, for one, wish them another 40-plus years of business success and hope that they will always be part of our local community. At this time, please help me welcome Ms. Robin Allen, Human Resource Manager, and Mr. Tony Church. If you are a citizen and would like to address a commission, please stand and wait to be recognized by the chair. Once recognized, then proceed to the podium. Clearly state your name and the subject matter of your comments. You will have five minutes to address the commission. Are there anyone in the audience that would like to... Mr. Blain?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Blain. I'm the broker and owner of Mountain Homes Realty. I've been a Realtor in this area for 22 years now. I think the biggest challenge that this commission is going to have in your four years is probably whether we build a school or not, and if we do build a school, the location of that school. If you're not familiar with the area out here, this is how it lays out. Would you please hold this up a little closer, and we can see how it lays out on the property. With a student-teacher ratio of 1 in 13 in Carter County, there's several indications that says maybe we shouldn't even build a school, but if so, the location of that school is going to be crucial. I think it's best served for us to improve and modernize our current schools, put money into our current schools, and bring in new computer systems to help provide help to our teachers to help them better do their jobs. The purchase of the land was done in the last commission. It was said we needed to do it fast and quick to get it done, and so they purchased this 7.13 acre parcel down here that's out here on Highway 91. We have done a feasibility study on this. It was purchased through the Tennessee Association of Realtors Land Contract with seven pages on there regarding feasibility and other things that might be involved in the purchase of land. One feasibility for the property is that it's the size of the property. Number one, they had to put the classes on top of each other because there's just no room to expand it into one level, as would be the national trend to put everything on one thing, and they said, "Well, we did that maybe to save some money," and that's not true. If you look at preliminary plans on that, they had to do that because the footprint couldn't be doubled in any other way. It had to do that, which is why they're limited in their parking. Their parking is barely half of what they need to be, and they said, "Well, okay, we'll do just like we do up in Hampton. We can have our mom and dad and grandma and grandpa park on the street out there on that five-lane highway and walk to the school events." And number three on that feasibility is that there's just no way to expand. When the life expectancy of the school is 75 to 80 years, we have no way to expand the current to what we've got for the future. Secondly, it is in a flood zone. It's not a low risk, as was suggested in the Winston meeting, but instead, according to a FEMA report, which is a matter of public records, it is zoned AE, which is a high-risk flood zone, mandatory flood insurance purchases required, and flood plain management standards do apply. According to Erie, which does the insurance for anything for FEMA in this area, that is a $20,000 a year premium for that flood insurance. Thirdly, have TVA. Because we're on a water plain out there, the TVA... I contacted the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. They said that in a water plain like there, especially since you're going to be taking six or seven acres of what is now pasture land and converting that into a footprint of concrete for a school, playgrounds, et cetera, that that is going to disturb the water levels that goes into that river, which is the Potaga River. So that Potaga River, since that's going to be the TVA, they said that before you can do anything, permits need to be required to be done through TVA, and they will do then a study, and they will tell us what size water line, what size sewer line, what the setbacks will be, where that school is going to be placed, and what kind of impact it's going to have on the river out here. And that is done through a watershed team out of Gray. So before any blueprints, plans are really done here, they will have to do their studies. And finally, I contacted the Federal Aviation Administration for their airport compliance specialists out of Washington, D.C., and asked them, "Can we put a school across the street from the airport?" The person there I talked to there said, "That is not compatible land use." In his opinion, the answer to that is no. But now, in all fairness, I did contact our local person, which is Dan Cogan, and asked him, "What is your interpretation of that?" He said, "I interpret it as you can put an airport or a school across the street from the airport." Whether that's good judgment, probably not, because we're looking at a noise factor and a safety factor. When you've got here an airport, they just expanded this up here, and this is where you're talking about that school being in relation to the airport. Now, I was saying the other night, what about Unaca? What about Unaca? Unaca is 1.3 miles away from that up here, and when Unaca was built, that was the Moody Aviation. Now, it's Elizabethan Municipal Airport. What is Municipal Airport going to be doing in the next 75 years?
Mr. Blain, your time's up, so...
Thank you very much. I don't know what they're going to do, but I would suggest that wherever we do, it's going to be up to this commission to make that decision, and I will urge you, please, go up here and look for yourself, like I did on Sunday morning. We'll take a look at this right here.
Thank you, Mr. Blain.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the commission? Mr. Livingston? Sir, you have five minutes.
Ladies and gentlemen, we all know that we've got money trouble here now, and I just want to give you a little background on some of the things that we already know there are some of us. You new commissioners, you might need to jot this down. Last year, and this past year here, we had 14 and a half cents come off of the cloud in school, and you can figure it out. Now, the penny brings in $80,000. You can figure $80,000, 14 and a half, for that to give you how much money you've got floating out here right now somewhere, and which it should have come off the tax roll, but we don't know if it's back to the general fund, exactly where it's at. Last year, this past year here, we had $800 and some thousand dollars come back from the office holders and stuff. I'd hate to hijack it before it got any work to do here. They took that to get it to school system. Now, if I'm not correct here, I want the financial director to correct me. And last year, the share turned in $902,000. Now, where's that money at? Somebody needs to give us account of where all this money is, how it got there, and why it got there. This money that was come off of these tax rolls here should have been took off the taxes. You can't pay for a car the rest of your life when you get paid for it. I believe it was May this year that that last payment was paid on this 14 and a half cent here. Now, if somebody don't get a hold of this money situation here, we're all going to sign. And they should have never raised the taxes last year or this year. It leaves appearance here, all this money floating around, there's enough money here to run three counties if you count for it. The new commissioners is going to be stuck with the task now to attempt to account for some of this money and stuff, because until you get a hold of this money, we're going all over that. Taxpayers, everybody. And when the taxpayers all goes down, I don't know how you figure who's going to pay your run, plus all the county employees, who's going to pay them? That's the way they get their money. When you drive them down, that's the end of it right there, because there ain't nobody running the money. But I just want to give you a highlight or two here on what's going on and has been going on in the past and kind of get this in mind. Now, today, they're probably going to try to shove some stuff through here on you. They do it all the time. They come in here, everything's got to be done today, right this minute. And more likely, from what I see on here, the planning commission's got something right here on the agenda that they're going to try to pop to you tonight. And that's the way they operate. They operate just like a shotgun weapon. Throw it up there and shoot that. We both part. When it's over, nobody knows what happened. Imagine my own, though. But you're going to have to get your stuff together and try to do some background checks on this and a little bit of research and understand what you're voting on before you vote. Our troubles ain't even got here. They're going to get worse and worse and worse, because the money situation is dire out now. If you speak with those who want to be on the Finance Committee and the Budget Committee, you need to pay close attention.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Livingston?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to recognize our school superintendent at this time.
Does he want to come up in public comments to the chair? Okay, if you would, sir, come on up. Sir, just like all the other parties, you'll have five minutes.
Yes, sir. Let me, first of all, say that we get the same questions that kind of get back in the Educational Committee workshop. Of course, I do understand that it was advertised, but we received no invitation to that workshop about working last minute and attended that workshop.
I'm glad we did.
Did you speak up, sir? I didn't hear you. I hear you. Last night, we showed up at the Educational Committee workshop with no invitation. I do understand it was put in the newspaper. Didn't catch it by the newspaper, but we did find out last minute to show up, and I'm glad we did, because same presentation, much limb bigger was given on this school site. You know, toward the end of the meeting, I would like to address the commission, so I would like for somebody that's allowed to address the commission on something besides this subject, because it's a very important subject, because it involves financing, and I'd like to talk to the full commission about that. In the meantime, plus, the school site has property runs to the middle river, which is obviously floodsome. Now, our architect did extensive study and background study before we ever looked at site, before we built the site. Most recently, it said that this was a bad purchase. This property was bought for $5,000. What it was, from one sharp to another sharp family member, it was transferred for $5,000. The two and a half acres that sits up there right now, where the convenience stores located, was purchased, it's 2.1 acres, it was purchased for $125,000, which is $59,223 per acre. We have $27,700 in 7.2 acres. Now, we are in the process of looking for a way to acquire some additional parking. Yes, we are, and we're working in terms of our architect has looked at utilities. There's a six-inch water line, as it said that we have inadequate utilities. That is what is required to build a school with a sprinkler system. There's natural gas to the property, which is very important, because natural gas is a cheap way of heating. And there's also a sewer, in which City of Elizabethan advised us that we could tap into based on the fact it's right at the edge of the property. As far as the preliminary studies and when it comes to talking about future renovations, for the last seven, eight years, our school system has used referendums. Carter County taxpayers generously voted in a half cent for us to do so. There's been extensive renovations to our schools. Our schools right now are to be 50-year-old, in many cases, and some older, are in very good shape. New windows, new bathrooms. We're looking to get ready to update our chemistry labs. We're also looking at fencing. We're taking care of 50-year-old infrastructures. Technology, over the last two years, three years, we've replaced over 1,500 computers that's been changed or updated, and the classroom has a smart wall. So you know, in terms of looking at some of what we have and what we've done, that's where we're at. And when we look at the airport, let's talk just for a second. Hunter Elementary is .02 miles from the end of the runway, where the new runway will extend to. He is correct. Hunter... Unaca is in direct flight path about 1.27 miles directly in front of the runway. This school is located 3/10 mile to the side of the runway. Now, if there is a problem with having a school located on that side of the road, that close to the airport, then Tennessee technology has made a very big mistake. So when it comes to talking about what we've done, what we'd like to do, we would like to develop dialogue, we'd like to develop an understanding between us, and be invited to the Educational Committee meeting so that we can share information and so that everybody can be informed on what our plans and what the board's plans are on this, on the Highway 91, Unaca Middle School. Mr. Mayor, I'll rest with those comments.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask a question?
I prefer not to get into question and answer. This is public comment section, so, Dr. Ward, thank you, sir. Are there any other parties in the audience that would like to speak? Yes, sir. Would come forward. Please state your name and your subject matter, and you... Please state your name and your subject matter, and you'll have five minutes to speak.
I won't need that much time. But we, Grant, we've had two different meetings on the voting on the budget committee, and I was wondering if it was going to come back up again. Because from what I understand, this round, we got twelve votes. According to the law, it was thirteen to get it done. So I just wondered if you was going to bring that up in this meeting.
I don't have any plans on bringing it up, not to say that some of the commissioners make. But thank you, Mr. Grant, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir, if you would, come forward.
First off.
Mr., please state your name and your subject matter. Five minutes, sir.
Gary White. Subject matter, Mr. Ward's school. First off, I'm not a personal friend of Mr. Humphries. I want to get that upfront. If anybody says that I am, I'm not. I know Mr. Humphries, I like him, but we're not a personal friend. I am concerned with taxpayers. I've paid taxes since nineteen sixty-eight, and I've never lived in. I've lived in the city, I don't even live in the county. I don't get nothing for my dollar, period. That's one thing that's got me tore up about. But you all voted illegal budgets. Illegal? How can you sit here and go with this budget and this school thing when it's illegal? A controller said it's illegal? Do I say it to the Attorney General? Our own attorney, Mr. Peters? I know that's not Mr. Peters. And Mr. Humphries, the beat down. You all swore, I've got your statement here, what you all swore to, that you would abide by the law. And Mr. Peters, you made a motion. You broke the law. And you knew it, but you went ahead and done it. You knew it, because I told you.
Mr. White, if you would, please, try to refrain from any just personal comments or recommendations.
Okay, okay.
And keep in mind, sir, certain members of this committee did participate in that process, but we've got fourteen people here that did not.
I understand.
So we've got to give them some consideration.
Okay, sir. Okay. Okay, I'll go on down. We voted for the mayor of the county. Each one of you guys are representing a district. You're not representing the whole county. Mr. Humphries, and he had a rough, I mean, you guys overhyped it, but I shouldn't say that, I brought that. But anyway, let's see. Propaganda, I've seen that in the paper. This is not propaganda, this is just the truth. Why don't we build a Kingbird Hunter and Unaca Elementary, poor Unaca Elementary, they get done dirty all the time. Why didn't you put those three schools together? Not a middle school. Why didn't you put them, and got Hunter out of Florida? It's two wrongs don't make a right. I don't understand why you don't build one big elementary school. And the deal about the one high school. We don't have one principal, one athletic director, one head football coach, one head baseball coach? How many millions of dollars would it save with Carter County High School? And I believe Unaca, just like this deal, you all really must get along, because there's one guy representing all four districts on this sign deal, when Mr. Ward's signs got tore down. He helped it up. But anyway, I don't understand why Kingbird and Hunter and Unaca Elementary could be put together. Elementary school, one school, that'd save three principals, we'd have one. I mean, we're getting guys, and I'd love, Mr. Tester, I'm going to brag on him. He come and said he had an idea, save us some money. It's never been voted, it's never went no farther. I'd love to see one of you guys have something every night at this meeting and say. Listen, let's think about this. I work for Axis Security part-time, and I went to Louisville, Kentucky, and the city of Louisville, Kentucky, thrown a festival and made twelve million dollars. Twelve, clear, twelve million dollars. Why can't we do a festival, a religious festival? We don't have to be a drunk alcoholic festival. I did one pitch in for a trance, a gospel quartet. And there was twelve thousand people there every night. Why can't we have something like it here and make some money for the county? Why can't we do that? All we want to do is cut salaries, cut this, cut that. Let's don't cut, let's expand. We can't expand, I know there's no business, there's no plants here, I know that. But we can come up with some ideas and figure out things we waste to make. In this five minutes, I don't know why, but people should have, do these guys get paid fifty dollars an hour?
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you.
It sounds like some of your subject matter would be more advised to attend the school board and talk to Dr. Ward and see if you can address that issue with them and not necessarily the county commissioner.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Being silent is addressed personally, I would like to make a comment on what you said.
I would rather you not, Mr. Peters. I don't think that we're going to get into that type of situation. That's why I called him in Parkin as a result of his comments. We're here to conduct the people's business, not get into discussions between us and the citizens. So, sir, I would ask that you decline that. Is there any other members in the audience that would like to address the commission of the public comments? Seeing none, we'll close this section of the agenda. Yes, sir.
I rise to a point of order, but I can't rise with all the wires and the crap going behind my chair. In order to point out and protest the breach of conduct and rules that I see found in the minutes that we were about to approve, and I would like to at least address this commission because of their fiduciary duty, financial care of the citizens' money and assets. May I give a comment?
Proceed on, sir. Just trend lightly, let's see what you've got to say, and we'll go from there.
I refer to a handout that has yellow highlighting. Who want to see that? Is that Mike? Am I coming through on the mic?
You are, sir, thank you.
I pointed out that this commission does have a fiduciary duty to the citizens. There's twenty-four men and women on this commission, as well as the mayor, that are responsible for the assets and funding the tax money of some fifty-seven thousand-plus citizens in this county. I'm referring to a vote that was taken in the special call meeting in order to cure a problem that was alleged or possibly came out in the September fifteenth meeting. And all eight districts were interrogated to redo their appointments for the committees. This commission knew the desires of the second district from the first commission meeting in September. But apparently, when the vote was taken on the twenty-ninth, which I was not present, I had a previous commitment, that the vote count for the second district came up twelve to ten. Now, according to the rules that you see before you, actually, it's a TCA code, it's a state law, that for transacting all business coming before the county legislative body, there has to be thirteen votes in order for it to carry. That is state law. And it is now in our minutes that we have put people and assigned them to committees on a twelve-vote basis, which is in violation of that law or short of that law. It was felt that at the final vote of twenty to two, at the end of the session, and that that would cure that and that they would ratify, this commission would ratify all the various district appointments. Now, that would work for seven out of the eight, but I'm saying that legally, it did not work out for one of those eight districts, the second district.
Mr. Behan?
Yes, sir.
If I may, you're absolutely correct as far as making the notations in the minutes. And you did affirm that on page five thirty, that we did ask for affirmation, there were twenty members of this commission that voted in the affirmative to accept what had transpired that day. Since that time, the party in question, Mr. Hill, has participated in other subcommittee meetings. He has been appointed chairman of the Highway Committee. He's been appointed as secretary of the Landfield Committee. And it's the opinion of the chair that that action will stand. All these activities, further rules, have to take place in the September meeting. And while we're talking about legalities and statutes, I would ask that the county attorney weigh in as far as his opinion on this matter, sir.
Could I make my final point, which you had just brought up, about activities of the committees that have already taken place and will continue to take place from now through the end of this term?
Anything else, sir?
Yes. The point is that maybe six or seven or eight months down the line, if the actions of this commission, as a result of that vote and people working on these committees, a citizen or a citizens' action group decides they want to make, take litigation against the county, we have in our minutes where we actually did a bad vote. And I'm not saying we should move people off here, but I want this commission to be aware that possibly we are opened up for litigation in the future. If someone challenges actions, because some of those committees are statutory committees and boards that these people are functioning on, and it could have ramifications. But I just wanted to weigh that out and.
Thank you, sir. And we'll ask Mr. Harms weigh in on this matter.
Okay. I'll preface my comments by saying I'm not a judge. So whatever my opinion is, or whatever any other attorney's opinion is, is just that. So whatever it's worth to you, it's worth to you, it's an opinion. The only person who can say definitively whether something is right or wrong is a judge, and I'm not a judge. State law, TCA five-five-one-oh-nine, does require that a majority of all members constituting the county legislative body, not merely a majority of the quorum, shall be required. And part four of that is kind of the catch-all provision, transact all business coming before the county legislative body. This commission, in two thousand and two, adopted rules and bylaws for appointing committees, the three major groupings of standing committees. If you want my opinion, I don't feel like those procedures comply with state law. They require two out of three in each district to select who's on the committee. Obviously, two or three votes is nowhere near thirteen votes. Just because it's a bylaw passed by this committee, you know, this commission cannot pass procedures that do not comply with state law. So just because this commission passes a rule that says we're only going to make two out of three vote the person on the committee, if that doesn't comply with state law, then it's meaningless. So my view of how to reconcile the current bylaws with state law was to have the overall confirming vote at the end to confirm the appointments to all committees, which we did, and that received twenty votes. So my opinion is that that vote is what made our committee procedures compliant with state law. That is also the opinion of C. Tax Attorney that I spoke with several times, Kristy Brown, as well. So whatever that's worth to you, that's my opinion, and that's her opinion. So I think that what we've done is legal, and I do not think that we're necessarily. Of course, anyone can challenge anything, and if some group came forward to challenge that, then they could get their day in court. And I'm not a judge, so I wouldn't be able to tell you what the final outcome would be, but I can tell you my opinion that what we've done thus far is legal.
Along those lines, I think irrespective of what's done, is done, should have occurred in September, the rules and bylaws committee is looking into making changes so that we are in compliance with all of our actions. Unfortunately, today, that's not been the case. So we're going to move on. Next order of business is approval of minutes, and we have two sets of minutes. The first one being the September fifteenth regular session. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes? Motion made by Mr. Lewis. Is there a second?
Question, one.
Is that a second?
No, it's a question. I just have a question.
Oh, we don't get into that actually, we get into second. Who has a second? Mr. Carroll has a second now. Discussion?
Discussion.
I agree with the first page back over. Therefore, at this time, Commissioner Brown requested a five-minute recess. Being old and senile, I went back to the, back to the video and played that last night. It appears that the, Mr. Brown did not request the five-minute recess. It was offered by the acting chairperson at that time. And that needs to be changed in minutes.
That's correct. Ms. Color did, in fact, ask Ms. Brown if she would like to meet with her commissioners for the second district. She said that she would, so the chair at that time, vice chair, did authorize it and go into a recess, five minutes. So that needs to be addressed and adjusted. Mr. Brown, say.
On page five fifteen, it states that there were twenty-five eyes, I think most were all vote. That only approved the change of new budget.
And you said that was on page five fifteen?
Five-eight-two.
Five-eight-two, I'm sorry, sir. Yeah, that midway at the page, twenty-five eyes?
Yes, sir.
Needs to be adjusted to twenty-four. Any other changes or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Again, who were those that were opposed? Let the record show that Ms. Deeks and Ms. Color are not in favor of approving those minutes.
I'll say.
Excuse me? Okay, that's third person. Still have a majority of the others. Those minutes are approved as amended. Okay, now let's look at the September twenty-ninth special call section. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
Absolutely.
Mr. Triv makes a motion, second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion?
Only to reiterate that this is a public record of twelve votes that was approved by some committees, and some of those committees are affecting statutory committees. So it is a public record.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I request that we do a roll call on this.
Not a problem. Any other discussion before we go into the roll call?
On page five twenty-eight, at the top of the page, you requested a vote, the chairman requested a voice vote from the board commission, placed Mike Hill on the highway, then. But then, when you read a statement, Al Behan, who could be placed on the rules and bylaws, we can confide on him. We voted on everything that night except that.
Point well taken. All the seats were determined by the other votes. Any other discussion? Madam Clark, if you would, please call and roll.
Mr. Peter?
No.
Willie Campbell?
No.
Jerry Crawford?
No.
Matt DeBram?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike Hill?
No.
Al Meehan?
No.
Beth LePue, Ronnie Trivet?
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon?
Yes, aye.
Elsie Kestner?
No.
Isaiah Bryanstad?
No.
Danny Ward?
No.
Ross Garland?
No.
Timothy Holbrooke?
No.
Bobby Dees?
No.
Randall Jenkins?
No.
Larry Miller?
No.
John Lewis?
Yes.
Ray Lyons?
Aye.
Sandra Color?
No.
Scott Samuel?
Yes.
Cody McQueen?
Yes.
Robert Carroll?
Yes.
Robert Goff?
Yes.
Seven guesses, fourteen guesses. Moving on to next order of business. Numbers in box, please.
Our next vote, we got a further two dozen.
Sir, eleven and four is twenty-five. Mr. Chairman. Madam Clark, could you please give us another tally of the roll call? It's actually ten fourteen, but I'm waiting for this clerk to verify.
It may be ten fourteen, we got one at it.
Okay. Here's the problem with these roll call votes. We need a roll call from automatic so we can see the tally. We don't have that. So to clarify, Madam Clark, please call a roll again.
Aye.
Would you rig, would you rig that motion in, Madam Clark?
Not with, with the twenty-nine, different way than me.
That one?
This is the whether or not you're going to approve the September 29 meeting.
Okay.
So if you would, please, pay attention. Call a roll, Madam Clark.
Peter Peter?
No.
Willie Campbell?
No.
Jerry Crawford?
No.
Nancy Brown?
Yes, sir.
Nancy Brown?
Yes.
Mike Hill?
No.
Al Meehan?
No.
Beth LePue? Ronnie Trivet?
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon?
Aye, yes.
Elsie Kestner?
No.
Isaiah Bryanstad?
No.
Danny Ward?
No.
Ross Garland?
No.
Timothy Holbrooke?
No.
Bobby Dees?
No.
Randall Jenkins?
No.
Larry Miller?
No.
John Lewis?
Yes.
Ray Lyons?
Aye.
Sandra Color?
No.
Scott Samuel?
Yes.
Cody McQueen?
Yes.
Robert Carroll?
Yes.
And Robert Goff?
Yes.
Okay, we have a slight change. It's nine fourteen. We're moving on to the next item on the agenda. Notary bonds. One second, Mr. Lewis. Let's give her a time to read. Sorry.
Ladies and Bush, Janice Ellen, Ted Del Miller, Martina, Dean Peters, Patrick Stephen Carpenter, Lindsay Tettington, and we need to add Andrew LaPorte, Laura A. Atkins, Jennifer Campbell, and April W.
Motion, Mr. Trump?
I'll say.
Motion made by Ms. Color, seconded by Mr. Jenkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Speaker, please. On the minutes that we did not pass?
Yes, sir.
Then the freshman commissioners, I am, when you do not pass the minutes, what happens? Does the process again?
If, if the minutes aren't approved, then...
I know there are no recorded minutes.
Yeah, there's no recorded minutes of what happened at that meeting, which is illegal, obviously.
I think it's a pretty good question.
Well, I think it's a great question. The attorney just advised us that that was illegal, in his opinion. Could you please expand upon that?
Well, we certainly have to have recorded minutes of what occurred at the meeting, and if this, you know, if the body doesn't approve those minutes, at least my understanding of it is that it's just as if the meeting didn't occur. I mean, we don't have any official records of that meeting.
That was my opinion too, actually, serving on several boards, fifty years. If you don't approve the minutes, you don't have any... I'll say anything, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. With that being said, we'll open the floor up for discussion. Do you want to let it stand as it is, or do you want to make adjustments to the minutes because they accurately reflect what happened in that meeting? So it's your choice. If you're voting just because of something you didn't like, then that needs to be amended.
Well, I'd, I'd like to say that the, that the meeting definitely happened because I was here.
Well, I was here as well, unless I, I bricked it, and most of the action, I think, that is noted therein, was reflected. I know that Mr. Meehan had some questions, and maybe some others, but just because you have a question, is that enough to negate the validity of those minutes? Mr. Trivet?
Mr. Chairman, reason for this bump, this special called meeting, that we got a letter that we violated the sunshine law. And that's the reason that it perturbed as far as this meeting, the 29th, and everybody went through them, was here, and we voted on each one of these individually. We had the opportunity to. So I don't see any problem with the minutes. They have to be a matter of public record, and if you don't approve, you don't have to come back and have another meeting.
More information?
I got four of them we had.
Let, let Mr. Trivet finish, Mr. Meehan. Let's give everybody an opportunity to speak.
You know, we took it time and time again, and everybody got up and explained their thing up here, of why they shouldn't be on these committees, and everybody had their change, and they all voted up. And then at the end, you voted twenty-two to accept the whole thing. And then you come up here tonight and say twelve to ten wasn't enough votes. Then on the end of it, you voted twenty-two, what two acts? So I don't see what the problem is.
Mr. Meehan?
Yes, sir. With the point of information, you can interrupt the speaker that has the floor, but I agree. I'll let Mr. Trump finish, but we did not get a letter saying we violated it. We got a letter saying that some of the activities may have, nothing came out with a definitive violation statement. It was an opinion from one lawyer at the Comptroller's office.
It was an opinion, sir, from Alicia Hodge of Open Counsel, Open Records Council. I conferred at length with our county attorney. He felt that we absolutely had no other choice but to call this meeting to try to remedy those alleged violations. In the event, legal action were initiated. So through the advice of our attorney, who we have to weigh in support of, and we all have to agree with that, at no point in time have any of you today given me any reason why we shouldn't have said this special call me seven minutes. Mr. Peters?
Well, I'll give you my reason why I voted against it. I feel like that the Second District wasn't really the same as the rest of the commission in that meeting. I know Mr. Meehan was absent. It was a special call meeting. He has, he had no prior knowledge that we were going to have that meeting. It's not like a regular scheduled meeting where it's on your calendar. He had no knowledge. He was out of town, out of the country, I suppose. Okay. I don't feel like, and, and at the meeting before, when they were all here, they made their decision. I don't think we respected the decision they had made before when we had that meeting. And that, and that's my opinion of why I voted against the meetings. I think, I think it needs to be a redo of the Second District. And so everybody has their right to stand up and say just like they did in the first one, the first part of that meeting where they voted. Now, that's just my opinion. That's why I voted against it. Plus, if it comes down to something illegal, I don't want to have my name as a proven. And, and another thing, when you call out the vote, the thirteen votes, I did not hear that. I did not hear what the, I should have been listening better, but I did not hear that it was thirteen votes. I know you had that thirteen votes. I did not, I did not hear that at that time. So that's, that's why I voted.
Well, I understand that, but again, all this had to take place in the September meeting. September, that's what the Rules and Bylaws state. However, our attorney is also just told us that those are not legal either. Mr. Peters, Mr. Ward?
With being a new commissioner, fourteen of us probably didn't know we had that thirteen votes. That's why I wouldn't have known for this, because somebody should have spoke up, whether it be the mayor, the, the chairman, or the lawyer, or the one of the existing commissioners that we had, and nobody stood and told us. You know, we, we're going by the rules that the commission has set, and nobody wants to tell us what they are. So why did nobody stand up and tell us if they had any thirteen votes?
Any other, Commissioner, Mr. McQueen?
For my experience on this, Mr. Chairman, you address this to the attorney as well. What are the ramifications of us not passing a seven meeting minutes for this meeting?
I think we, we addressed that a few minutes ago. Certainly unprecedented territory. I mean, it's not something that I can just give you a, a concrete opinion on, but the way I feel about it is if the meeting minutes were not approved, then it's just as if that meeting never happened. We have to have the record, the meeting minutes approved and on the record, it's public record, and if you don't have that, in my opinion, it's just as if the meeting never happened.
And the, the part of that, the reason we have to have that meeting is to show that there was open, clear consideration for each of those seats, open discussion. In part of that, there is no record that says that we did. Mr. Hill?
Yes, sir. So since a lot of this kind of centers around me, unfortunately, I'd just like to say that we haven't done much county business in the last couple of months because of this, and I really don't want to see a redo of the do-over. I don't want to be partying to wasting county resources in this manner. Ms. Brown has been voting on things and acting on things and seconding and motioning things in the Budget Committee meeting, which is very important work, okay? And like you stated before, I was, I was shamed into, I'm teasing, that's a joke, but I'm the, the new chair of the Highway Committee, and I've fielded several phone calls already, happy to do it. And I'm the secretary of the Landfill Committee, so, you know, I, I just, I just want to say again, we always kind of move on. There's no chance we're going to get students in trouble. I'll caveat it that way. And could we just make a simple matter of record that there was a twelve, there was, there was a vote of twelve to ten to confirm Ms. Brown as opposed to the, the record was at thirteen, so that maybe we don't have this problem going while we're...
Sir, thank you for that. Points well taken, and come September, we can do this again unless the Rules and Bylaws Committee decides to make a change, because as new commissioners, this would be an opportunity to, to maybe entertain some of the other committees. But if I'm hearing the attorney right, and I may be incorrect, we still have to have this set of minutes approved to validate that the meeting did occur and there was open consideration, public consideration, discussion amongst each of you individuals. And basically, that's all that's in these minutes, that you have an opportunity to explain your background, your credentials, and the desire to be on which committee.
Can I have a...
Go ahead, Mr. Carroll.
Okay, so I didn't mention the fact that I voted no against this, was that I didn't, like Mr. Peters, want my name on something as voting yes when it was possibly an infringement or a bending of the rules. So that being said, could I make a motion to take one more recount on this thing?
Yes, sir. Motion made by Mr. Hill. Do we have a second by Mr. Holbrooke? Madam Clark, if you would, please.
Just, I have a question. Did I have a question?
Yes, sir.
Is this, Mr. Meehan, is this all right with you?
Okay. According to Bobby, I'm not sure I'm on any committee at this point. If that's true, we won't put you on. We need to make sure that everything's called in perfectly well.
If you are on a committee, we'll address that later when we get to nominating Mr. Trivet for that.
My concern is that you all have the same opportunities to risk this. If you're satisfied with it, I'm satisfied.
All right. My concern was not to move anybody off the current committees, but if something should come up down the line because of what's in these minutes, which is public record if we approve it, if litigation should come against this commission, if someone would vote beyond the Rules and Bylaw, I'd be happy to make a stand. That's, that's...
The only question that I have is the no vote. That's the only reason I thought you'd tell us, please.
Well, it's clear that no vote is not acceptable, so we have a motion with a second. Madam Clark, call a roll.
Peter Peter?
Aye.
Willie Campbell?
No.
Jerry Crawford?
No.
Nancy Brown?
Aye.
Mike Hill?
Yes.
Al Meehan?
Yeah, I'm voting no because I was not a committee.
Beth LePue, Ronnie Trivet?
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon?
Aye.
Elsie Kestner?
Aye.
Isaiah Bryanstad?
Aye.
Danny Ward?
Aye.
Ross Garland?
Aye.
Timothy Holbrooke?
Aye.
Bobby Dees?
No.
Randall Jenkins?
No.
Larry Miller?
Yes.
John Lewis?
Yes.
Ray Lyons?
Aye.
Sandra Color?
No.
Scott Samuel?
Yes.
Cody McQueen?
Aye.
Robert Carroll?
Aye.
Robert Goff?
Aye.
Mr. Meehan, I think we'll...
I'm going to change, I'm going to note that, because I was not present at that meeting.
Mr. Chairman, can I say just one thing? Just hold up. Twenty eyes, three days, one accent. It adds up in a form that's going to get us there.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trivet?
I may say something. Mr. Al Meehan wasn't a official, but on these records, as I'm sure, but we need to put this and that into the minutes. And I want to humiliate Mr. Al Meehan for the Rules and Bylaws, bill and grams, bond enforcement, health and welfare, recreation committee.
I say.
So I'll make that the formal motion.
Say.
Don't create a voter get in there and add that to the minutes.
I need to go through and, and vote him in there and add that to the minutes.
He was already on that committee. And Mr. Mehan was, he missed this last meeting that we had earlier this week. So, that motion is not in order.
According to the minutes, sir, we didn't vote on it.
By default, he was included. So, and he is on that list, so that motion is not in order.
We are with you.
Okay? Thank you. Now, Mr. Ward, if you would please. Sorry to take so long.
No problem. Thank you for the time this evening. The audit committee continues to work with the county offices here on their audits and, uh, actually, I should have been here a little sooner than this. Um, didn't realize that the statute required me at the end of, uh, once we got done working with all of the various offices, to actually come and report to you. I made a report on the first audit here some time ago, but, uh, so my comments tonight are on the audit for the period ending June thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, which I'm sure the commissioners that were on the last group probably saw that. Those of you who are new, um, certainly the mayor could get you a copy of the audit report. Uh, nothing, uh, earth shattering, uh, came, came out of this audit report. We had, uh, a meeting with the Tennessee Comptroller Office County Auditors, Mark Treese and Robert Anderson. And, uh, uh, the first, uh, finding, uh, and, and none of these findings were of a very, uh, much substance. Uh, the first one was, uh, from the office of county mayor and, uh, the finding was expenditures exceeded appropriations. Uh, judicial commissioners, uh, were over two hundred and twenty-five dollars as a result of accrued payroll at the end of the year. It's just simply an accounting issue. Um, also, the miscellaneous category exceeded appropriations as a result of failure to amend for revenues received for the railroad authority in the amount of a hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and nine dollars. Um, revenues were received in February and April, but the amendment was not approved. And what the, uh, the offices, uh, uh, told the committee that they will do is that they will make more, uh, amendments on a more timely basis, like maybe once every two weeks. From the director of schools, the school nutrition department had deficiencies related to employee travel, uh, charges made on the department's credit card to attend a conference. The director could not attend and was unable to recoup the cost of the registration. However, she did apply a portion of the cost on airline ticket to a conference later in the year. Um, Dr. Ward was at our meeting and he stated that in the future, purchase orders will be obtained prior to credit card charges and approval forms and purchase orders will be accurate and consistent. Also, uh, from the school system, the school's, uh, federal project fund had a deficit unassigned fund balance at June thirtieth. The deficit resulted from the deferral of several grant reimbursements set up as accounts receivable, uh, that were not received within the department's sixty-day, uh, availability period. And a lot of this has to do with the software system that they use. Um, the, uh, system, however, was changed. The final request for funds was made on June twenty-seventh. So, again, it was an accounting issue. Uh, the books are closed on June thirtieth and the request was made on twenty-seventh, but did not get done by the thirtieth. Uh, in fact, at that meeting, I asked the auditor whether this should really even be a finding. I thought it was, uh, a nitpicky thing to, to point out. But, uh, from the sessions court, general sessions court, we had continued issues with the accounting records not adequately reflecting the financial activity of the office. However, year by year, they are whittling this number down. Um, uh, the auditor, Mark Treese, stated that it was repeated the year before, but with some improvements. Uh, last year, there were four parts. This year was down to two. Uh, the bookkeeper, Lisa Light, uh, stated that nearly a hundred and sixty-six thousand had been corrected and removed from last year's figures, bringing the number down to two hundred and thirteen thousand. I think a couple of years ago, that was about four hundred and seventy. It's, it's quite a bit higher than that. So, uh, possibly with the new administration in that office, uh, we can continue to see that come down. Another finding in the, the sessions court clerk office was that clerk did not comply with the judge's order to invest funds. Um, evidently, there was a, a lag between the time the funds came in and when they're available to be invested. Um, the office's software did not have adequate application controls and the auditor said this is actually a weakness in the system. It's not something employees in this office are doing wrong. Um, and he, hopefully, Icon could improve their internal controls and solve a lot of issues. And lastly, employees shared usernames and passwords. Uh, we all work in a, a technical environment anymore and, uh, one of the things that they noted was that the problem occurred when employees are using the counter station when receiving money. They, they sign on and then they walk away to do something else and they, they, they're left sign on. So, uh, that's an issue that that office was also trying to address and straighten out. As you can see, bottom line here is that there aren't any funds missing. That's the biggie. One of your responsibilities is to be a good steward of the county taxpayers' money. Uh, these operation, these issues, I believe, are, uh, for the most part, operational issues and, uh, hopefully, will not be duplicated in the future.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions? And we'll, we'll be back, uh, I know the, the auditors completed their work, I think, did they not, Ingrid? So, once their report is issued, um, and we have a, a chance, the audit committee to look that over, if there are issues to be discussed with each of the department heads, we will do so and I will be more timely on bringing that back to this group. Questions? Yes?
I have one question. Can you just give a brief summary of what protocol changes were put in place to make sure these don't have to go?
Well, I'd have to call on the various office holders to, to really address that.
Just, just on what you addressed this evening?
Okay. The, the, uh, for instance, in the school system, they changed their procedure on how you've got to get the purchase order approved before you can buy the airplane tickets. And, and Dr. Ward, anything to add to that?
Basically, no, uh, no credit cards issued, or, you know, it's assistant credit cards being used for that.
Ingrid, the, a lot of this is accounting, uh, like, uh, applied for something on June twenty...
There's a copy of our audit each year that took it on the conference website. There's also a copy of our response as to what policies and procedures that we changed. So, the easiest thing, instead of Mr. Wardman trying to repeat everything we did a year ago, the easiest thing for you is just to read that on the conference office. And if you want to stop by my office on your way out, I'll be glad to bring that off for you much if you have it.
None of these, with the exception of the, uh, the first finding for the general sessions clerk office, none of these, with that, with that one exception, were continuing issues. They were all new, one-time issues that, uh, we felt, the committee felt, was being addressed. Yes?
Yes, sir. Could you tell us how far back the problem existed with the general sessions?
Well, just that, that office even hired Blackburn Childers and Stigall to come in and try and go through the weeds. Um, the, the problem went so far back that I don't know that we'll ever get it down to zero. Um, there, there was something in the way they were doing their daily operations that was not correct. Um, when, every month when they closed out their books, they were off a different number. If, if you have an old issue, and let's say you're off by a hundred and five thousand, if you're doing your daily work correctly now, then every month when you close your books, you should still be off a hundred and five thousand. But they weren't. They were, it was, it was a bounce around number. It wasn't off a whole lot. So, one of the things that the committee, uh, recommended was that maybe they talk to some of the other offices like this in other counties to, to see if they have best practices or, or standard operating procedures that would fix this issue. Um, and hopefully, this year, when we get the audit report back, we'll find that things are better. No, no money is missing. There's money in an account that they don't know where it needs to go, whether it needs to go back.
Sounds to me like it's a long-term problem.
Yes, sir. It was.
Came up in the audit. And we need to learn from evidence that happens with this commission.
Exactly. Yes. Um, the problem is, we're at the, the mercy of the new office holder and how he runs his office.
I understand.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Thank you.
I just want you to, to know that this, uh, audit committee is made up of Mr. Wardman, financial planner, we have a attorney here, Elizabeth, and also sits on that CPA and a representative from ETSU. So, we're fortunate to be able to have professional folks of their caliber to come in and work with us. And as we close out this, uh, audit cycle, they'll have a meeting, meet as indicated, uh, and get together with all those, uh, office holders where it applies as far as findings concerned, and they'll bring the report back in more time and probably write it for first of the year. Okay? Thank you. Now, we're going on to resolutions. The first one is the, to retire canine deputy from service. And I'd ask Mr. Harden to please take the lead on these resolutions.
Okay. As, as the mayor pointed out, the first resolution that, that we're considering is, is a resolution to retire a canine service dog from the, uh, from use with the sheriff's office and actually place him in the care of his longtime handler. Uh, this was the same process we followed approximately two years ago, uh, with, with another canine that was retired. And basically, um, anytime the county has excess property, technically, we have to declare that property as surplus, has to be sold at public auction. But in this circumstance, we're, we're talking about a trained police dog. So, obviously, you can see the, uh, the issues that would surround, uh, trying to sell that dog to just whoever decided to bid on it at a public auction. So, we can't do that. Uh, so, upon advice from the state comptroller and CTS, uh, this process was followed approximately two years ago and that's what we're doing now, to retire this canine from service and officially place him in the care of his handler, uh, who has been caring for him basically for the past six years anyway. Uh, but this relieves the county of all responsibility and liability for the animal. Uh, separately signed an agreement with this handler whereby he assumes all responsibility and liability for this animal going forward and he will humanely care for the animal for the rest of its life, not work him in any capacity, sell him anything of that nature.
Mr. Chairman, I think we need to foresee the reading of the resolution and I make the motion to be accepted.
Second. A motion to, um, forego the reading of the resolution by Mr. Trivett and to accept it as is, seconded by Mr. Campbell. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? After the record showed, the, um, amendment was adopted in the affirmative. Item B, forensic services.
Is he just voting on the motion not to read?
No, and to accept.
Okay.
And to accept.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to be, uh, have a five minute recess.
Do I hear a second? We'll stand in five minute recess. The R fire's going into ten and then ten into fifteen. So, uh, as far as the resolution's concerned, there are some questions. Uh, last month, uh, there was a motion made that we would have a second reading on resolutions, at least two readings. But there was some extended, uh, discussion on that and indicated that from time to time, there are situations where that may not be possible and we asked Mr. Lush to weigh in on that at that time, which you did. Now, your minutes do not reflect that. Minutes do not always include all discussion. Minutes are to be concise, point, uh, report action taken and who made those actions, who took those actions. Uh, they don't need to be lengthy novels, uh, we're not trying to compete with Dickens or any of those folks. We just need them to be clear, concise, and the point. But furthermore, given this first resolution's concern, uh, retiring the canine deputy from service, I think common sense would tell you, based on the information hint, that this is one of those items that would not require a second reading. There's not a whole lot to consider here. I mean, the facts are in place. Uh, now, Mr. Trivett did make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes and we had a second on that. And, uh, in our rush for a break, we just did a voice vote and that's not proper either for resolution. So, at this time, I think you've all read the resolution. We've already agreed to not read the resolution and we will take a voice roll call vote as to whether or not you approve of this, uh, resolution to retire canine deputy from service. Mr. Ron Cannon, you hit your head.
No discussion, uh, I think the point here is not diesel in weight, it's the man and woman that gave two dogs, Diesel and one other, and I think they were Malinois rather than German Chavers. Uh, and David, well, of course, has since deceased and that's the, the thanks that we should give that family. And the dog and horse have been here longer than most of us, seven years.
And in addition to that, this particular resolution required per CTS recommendations, some other action be taken by the county. And the county attorney has initiated that action. And, uh, is there anything else you'd like to say in reference to this resolution as to only one reading and, uh, action on it?
Well, certainly, this is, is not a, a controversial resolution. I, you know, I don't know what a second reading or a second vote would accomplish rather than delay. I actually spoke with the handler today and apparently the dog has bone cancer and really can't even hardly stand. Uh, so, I, I don't know what, uh, what new information or, uh, what, what else could be achieved by waiting another month and voting twice on this, but certainly, that's your all's decision to make.
I think being at the commission and facing emergency or something, we can do away with it, merge for safety of reading.
I think that's what we agreed to last time, that we'd use just common sense and do consideration for each matter that comes before you. Some will require it, some won't. Ms. Deeks?
I don't think that's, I, I think if you listen to the tape, I don't think that's what you're hearing. But the motion, I'd like to read. Before a resolution is approved, to have two meetings, their commission meetings on new and later issues, and have county attorney Joshua Harden discuss the resolution on the second reading prior to being presented for approval. And in past sixteen to eight, I voted against it because I knew at the time, we did not want a second reading on everything that came before us. But that's what it states. And we shouldn't bend the rules. We don't like...
We're, we're not bending the rules, Ms. Deeks. Ms. Deeks, we're not bending the rules. If you'll go back and listen to the audio, you will pick up on that discussion. It's not in the minutes. The minutes don't reflect every item that was discussed in every detail.
Ingrid said at the time that it would create problems.
But she also said that there would be exceptions that have to be taken into consideration. That's what we've done. Mr. Ward?
I did talk to, uh, Chris Hall of CTS and he seems to think this was not a good idea also. He's supposed to be getting some information for me for the next meeting. I'll ask for information about this.
That would be great. Get that to Rules and Bylaws Committee, let them address it, and then we'll go from there. We'll take their recommendation, or at least entertain their recommendation at that time. So, at this point, we'll ask for a roll call vote on the first resolution, the retirement of canine deputy from service. Madam Clark, call the roll, please.
Peter Peters?
No. No.
Aye.
Jerry Crawford?
Yes.
Nancy Brown?
Yes.
Mike Hill?
Yes.
Al Meehan?
Yes.
Ronnie Trivitt?
Yes.
Charles Moncannon?
Yes.
Elsie Kestner?
Aye.
Isaiah Brianstaff?
Yes.
Danny Ward?
Of course, yes.
Yes.
Ross Garland?
Yes.
Kimpy Hofer?
Yes.
Bobby Diggs?
Yes, I thought the resolution, but I realized it goes against the motion.
Randall Jenkins?
Yes.
Larry Miller?
Yes.
John Lewis?
Yes.
Ray Lyons?
Aye.
Sonia Collet?
Aye.
Scott Semley?
Yes.
Cody McQueen?
Aye.
Robert Carroll?
Aye.
Robert Goff?
Aye.
Will you want to change the vote?
Yes, I'd like to change the matter. We need to straighten this to their side.
Anyone changing, too?
Yes.
Is the owner going to get this dog? That's the main question.
Yes, the current handler of the dog has had him for the whole time.
I've trained him on the years.
All ayes.
All ayes. Okay. Item B, forensic services agreement. Mr. Harden, would you please open up the discussion on that?
Yes, sir. This is a resolution which we basically approve and allow the mayor to execute on behalf of the county the forensic services agreement or contract between the county and ETSU. This, as my understanding, is the same exact agreement, with the exception of the numbers, of course, because it's per capita, that has been approved in Sullivan County and Washington County already. Basically, the agreement says forth the duties of the county and the duties of ETSU in regard to death investigations and performing autopsies. State law was changed on this a couple years ago, I believe, but basically, all suspicious deaths of any type, which includes when there are drugs present at the scene of a death, requires now special forensic investigation of the death scene. This agreement between the county and ETSU will basically ensure that we're complying with all those things, that the folks at the forensic center at ETSU will provide the county with consulting services, they'll be available to respond 365 days a year at any time to death scenes if they're requested. This does not replace our current county coroner or medical examiner. The ETSU, my understanding, has worked in conjunction and provide consulting services for those folks. I believe it's to be a four-year agreement. It was supposed to commence on October 1st, but we didn't get it together in time to be presented at last month's meeting. But absent any questions, basically, it gives a per capita charge for the services they're providing, and all the counties come together to maintain that forensic center at ETSU.
It's imperative that ETSU maintain their accreditation of this facility. With the loss of the accreditation, then we will not have a source to do the forensics. This is not a new matter. The First Tennessee Development District and the mayors have been negotiating with ETSU now for over a year and a half. And also, this information was provided to the budget committee this year, and the funding has been incorporated into the budget. Ingrid, is there anything you would like to add along those lines? As far as the development district's concerned, and the eight mayors that sit on that board, they're all in agreement. This is not something that's been through just very short consideration. It's been deliberate over time. And in addition, the initial contract that you have was submitted to legal counsel. Attorney Bowers served as the lead on that because at the time, he was working both as a county attorney for Washington and Carter. All of the attorneys from the eight counties that make up that development district weighed in on this agreement, and they feel that the language is now proper in no way, shape, form, or fashion contrary to any of the state statutes at control. So this is another one of those resolutions that would be first reading, only reading in order to be able to sign the contract. The contract is supposed to start October 1st, and there's no way that the mayor can actually execute this contract unless it comes before the commission and they have approved, and that's where we're at now. So the floor is open for a motion to accept the resolution. Mr. Ward, you've made the motion, second by Mr. Hill. Any discussion?
And this proves that that motion that was made in section 15 is for long-term.
Thank you, Ms. Deeds. We'll go back and we'll check the actual tape that occurred, and we'll take that straight. Mr. Moncannon?
On page six, there's a schedule of what this is going to cost the county. Is this a mandated thing?
It is. There's no way out of it. Prior to this, we weren't on a per capita basis, and all of the counties did not necessarily pay their fair share, and now it is. It's based on the population.
One of the counties tried to opt out, I think of the Washington County, because they thought they could do this cheaper by transporting.
No, sir. That was Hawkins County, and even Johnson thought about that initially, but after due consideration, they also came into this. Again, we've got 100% participation, and Washington County thinks that the best thing could happen because it actually lowers their cost per autopsy on a case-by-case basis, and it will ours as well with the new standard.
So this is a total of seventy, eighty thousand dollars of new money we've got to find somewhere?
No, sir. Mr. Lutz, could you please respond to that as far as the debt numbers? I don't have those in front of me.
Sure. And I don't have any time in front of me, but I can tell you for this 13-year, for 13, 14-year, we have approximately fifty thousand dollars that was allocated for forensic services. This is in conjunction with that fifty thousand dollars. We have continually had operations with the ETSU forensic center. They are just reorganizing their structure to meet the state mandates for the county coroner, for the testing investigators and the medical examiners. This is already in your 14, 15 budget, it's already funded. Your budget committee listened to presentations, and they put that in funding for that, but we do not see any way around it. We cannot fund our own medical examiner, our own testing investigators, and the county coroner cheaper than we can do this. This is a conjunction with lots of other counties, and like the mayor said, the county has 100% participation. So the budget committee went with what was projected here and what you see on page number six, and that is in your budget. Now, what is not anticipated is the 15, 16 fees, the 16, 17, and 17, 18. Those will have to be addressed here in budget cycles, but if you do this contract, you're in there for four years, and we will have to fund it. And you can see it increases pretty dramatically for the second year, goes down the third year and back down one more.
Any other discussion? One thing that we failed to take into consideration with the actual reading, we took the motion to whether or not we would accept by Mr. Ward and Mr. Hill. Do we have a motion at this point in time as far as the waiving of the reading of this resolution?
So moved.
Mr. Trivitt, who was second, I'm sorry, Mr. Crawford. All those in favor of waiving the reading of this, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. At this point in time, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll as to those commissioners that are in favor, please respond whether you're in favor or against the resolution. Call a roll, please.
Be repeated.
Louie Campbell?
Aye.
Jerry Crawford?
Aye.
Nancy Brown?
Aye.
Mike Hill?
Aye.
Al Meehan?
Aye.
Mr. P, Ronnie Trivitt?
Aye.
Charles Moncannon?
Aye.
Elsie Kestner?
Aye.
Isaiah Brianstaff?
Aye.
Danny Ward?
Aye.
Ross Garland?
Aye.
Kimpy Hofer?
Aye.
Bobby Diggs?
Aye.
Randall Jenkins?
Aye.
Larry Miller?
Aye.
John Lewis?
Aye.
Ray Lyons?
Aye.
Sonia Collet?
Aye.
Scott Semley?
Aye.
Cody McQueen?
Aye.
Robert Carroll?
Aye.
Robert Goff?
Aye.
All ayes. Resolution is adopted. And then finally, item C, the hour C, IBC, IPMC adoption. Mr. Clerk?
Chair, under title, by check, we must be a public notice of a public hearing for adoption of this resolution, but it's not going around. On top of that, we have new planning decisions. I think it'd be in due course for one of the members to make a motion, just back to the planning decision until a vote of notice.
What's that motion?
I say.
So moved by Ms. Collet, who was the second. We had multiple, Mr. Jenkins. Any discussion? As the clerk calls a roll, respond to saying aye if you're in favor, no if you're opposed. Call a roll, Madam Clerk.
Be repeated.
Aye.
Louie Campbell?
Aye.
Jerry Crawford?
Aye.
Nancy Brown?
Aye.
Mike Hill?
Aye.
Al Meehan?
Aye.
Mr. P, Ronnie Trivitt?
Aye.
Charles Moncannon?
Aye.
Elsie Kestner?
Aye.
Isaiah Brianstaff?
Aye.
Danny Ward?
Aye.
Ross Garland?
Aye.
Kimpy Hofer?
Aye.
Bobby Diggs?
Aye.
Randall Jenkins?
Aye.
Larry Miller?
Aye.
John Lewis?
Aye.
Ray Lyons?
Aye.
Sonia Collet?
Aye.
Scott Semley?
Aye.
Cody McQueen?
Aye.
Robert Carroll?
Aye.
Robert Goff?
Aye.
All ayes. Motion passes. Next item, please.
Do I hear a motion to approve the general phone, school phones, one forty-one, I mean from two, three items for a total of seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and five dollars and sixty-three cents, with fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and four coming from the GPS phone balance. The amount coming from the GPS phone balance is to cover the cost of fencing upgrades at the hospital. Do I hear a motion?
I say.
No, we need a motion.
A motion.
So are you going to initiate that motion, Mr. Campbell?
Yeah.
Second by Ms. Deeds. Any questions? Discussion, see none, call a roll, please.
Be repeated. Louie Campbell?
Aye.
Jerry Crawford?
Aye.
Nancy Brown?
Aye.
Mike Hill?
Aye.
Al Meehan?
Aye.
Mr. P, Ronnie Trivitt?
Aye.
Charles Moncannon?
Aye.
Elsie Kestner?
Aye.
Isaiah Brianstaff?
Aye.
Danny Ward?
Aye.
Ross Garland?
Aye.
Kimpy Hofer?
Aye.
Bobby Diggs?
Aye.
Randall Jenkins?
Aye.
Larry Miller?
Aye.
John Lewis?
Aye.
Ray Lyons?
Aye.
Sonia Collet?
Aye.
Scott Semley?
Aye.
Cody McQueen?
Aye.
Robert Carroll?
Aye.
Robert Goff?
Aye.
All ayes. Motion passes. Next item, please.
Do I hear a motion to approve the general phone, school phones, one forty-one, excuse me, one forty-one, I mean from two, three items for a total of seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and five dollars and sixty-three cents, with fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and four coming from the GPS phone balance. The amount coming from the GPS phone balance is to cover the cost of fencing upgrades at the hospital. Do I hear a motion?
I say.
No, we need a motion.
A motion.
So are you going to initiate that motion, Mr. Campbell?
Yeah.
Second by Ms. Deeds. Any questions? Discussion, see none, call a roll, please.
Be repeated. Louie Campbell?
Aye.
Jerry Crawford?
Aye.
Nancy Brown?
Aye.
Mike Hill?
Aye.
Al Meehan?
Aye.
Mr. P, Ronnie Trivitt?
Aye.
Charles Moncannon?
Aye.
Elsie Kestner?
Aye.
Isaiah Brianstaff?
Aye.
Danny Ward?
Aye.
Ross Garland?
Aye.
Kimpy Hofer?
Aye.
Bobby Diggs?
Aye.
Randall Jenkins?
Aye.
Larry Miller?
Aye.
John Lewis?
Aye.
Ray Lyons?
Aye.
Sonia Collet?
Aye.
Scott Semley?
Aye.
Cody McQueen?
Aye.
Robert Carroll?
Aye.
Robert Goff?
Aye.
All ayes. Motion passes. Next item.
I think a motion to approve the general phone budget one-on-one, and then from the board with nine items for a total of eleven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars, thirty-seven cents, with four thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars coming from the phone balance. The amount from the phone balance has increased to about eighty-four. Good cut, discounts for a one hundred dollar increase with no mileage. This is to set up the appropriate debit line, either to process the payment through payroll as directed by the IRS. Now make that point of the motion.
Ms. Collet has made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Aye.
Second by Mr. Brianstaff. Any discussion? See none, Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Be repeated.
Louie Campbell?
Aye.
Jerry Crawford?
Aye.
Nancy Brown?
Aye.
Mike Hill?
Aye.
Al Meehan?
Aye.
Mr. P, Ronnie Trivitt?
Aye.
Charles Moncannon?
Aye.
Elsie Kestner?
Aye.
Isaiah Brianstaff?
Aye.
Danny Ward?
Aye.
Ross Garland?
Aye.
Kimpy Hofer?
Aye.
Bobby Diggs?
Aye.
Randall Jenkins?
Aye.
Larry Miller?
Aye.
John Lewis?
Aye.
Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll, please.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
William Campbell.
Aye.
Jerry Crawford.
Aye.
Nancy Graham.
Aye.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Almeen Ham.
Aye.
Beth Pugh, Ronnie Trivitt.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Isaiah Brianstad.
Aye.
Danny Ward.
Aye.
Ross Garland.
Aye.
Timothy Hofer.
Aye.
Bobby Davis.
Aye.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Larry Miller.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Ray Lins.
Aye.
Sandra Coe.
Aye.
Scott Semerly.
Aye.
Cody McQueen.
Aye.
Robert Carroll.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All ayes, motion passes, next item, please.
Do I hear a motion to approve the general fund, school funds, one oh, excuse me, one forty-one, a minimum of two, three items for a total of seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and five dollars and sixty-three cents, with fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and four coming from the GPS fund balances? The amount coming from the GPS fund balance is to cover the cost of fencing upgrades at the hospital. Do I hear a motion?
I say.
No, we need a motion.
A motion.
Oh, okay.
So are you going to initiate that motion, Mr. Campbell?
Yeah.
Second by Ms. Deets, any questions? Discussion, seeing none, call roll, please.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
William Campbell.
Aye.
Jerry Crawford.
Aye.
Nancy Graham.
Aye.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Almeen Ham.
Aye.
Beth Pugh, Ronnie Trivitt.
Aye.
I say aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Isaiah Brianstad.
Because I am an employee of Carter County, I have a conflict of interest in the vote of the vote, I would require that my argument and my vote be only to my colleagues and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens as well as representatives, I vote aye.
Danny Ward.
Aye.
Ross Garland.
Aye.
Timothy Hofer.
Aye.
Bobby Davis.
Aye.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Larry Miller.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Ray Lins.
Aye.
Sandra Coe.
Having conflicts of interest, I pass.
Scott Semerly.
Aye.
Cody McQueen.
Aye.
Robert Carroll.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
One pass and then five.
Motion passes, next item, please.
Next item brought to us by the mayor, and this is the acoustic ceiling on the first floor in the annex, these are restrooms prepared, these estimate costs approximately sixty-nine hundred dollars to purchase new tiles. The sheriff department has provided adultified inmate labor for installation, we have motioned to approve the transfer of sixty-nine hundred from the litigation tax reserve for the jail, workhouse, and courthouse to the building's ground budget to purchase the acoustic ceiling tiles for the annex.
I remember motion. Motion made by Ms. Coeller, seconded by Mr. Ward, any discussion? Yes, sir.
Mr. Blackishew, I said in the meeting, I just had a question, who he is exactly?
He is our circuit court clerk.
Oh, Johnny.
Johnny, Johnny Blackishew, okay? Yes, sir.
Can I go up to the jail and look at the ceiling tile they were needing?
One thing is not accounted for in that sixty-nine hundred, that's just the material for the ceiling tile themselves. We are going to need the grid work, but we'll pull that out of the mayor's budget this time to accommodate that, because when you look down the hallway, you look in some of the courtrooms and over in the office, it's definitely needed. So we're working with a very small window of opportunity this time, because inmate labor is going to do, take their own.
Mr. Chairman, I might add, the man who puts up the ceiling tile, he's only got thirty days left, so we have to hurry.
We've got to move quickly. So, any, any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll, please.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
William Campbell.
Aye.
Jerry Crawford.
Aye.
Nancy Graham.
Aye.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Almeen Ham.
Aye.
Beth Pugh, Ronnie Trivitt.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Isaiah Brianstad.
Aye.
Danny Ward.
Aye.
Ross Garland.
Aye.
Timothy Hofer.
Aye.
Bobby Davis.
Aye.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Larry Miller.
Aye.
John Lewis. Ray Lins.
Aye.
Sandra Coe.
Aye.
Scott Semerly.
Aye.
Cody McQueen.
Aye.
Robert Carroll.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
Ms. Coeller, thank you. There is one, a couple other items also pertaining to budget. Mr. Cobal, the superintendent of roads did not make the budget committee meeting, he has an item that we would like to address at this point in time, or he's asked that we address, because it's somewhat time sensitive. He would like to enter into a contract with Kings Fork Imaging Systems Inc. It's a sixty-month term, a cost of fifty-seven dollars and sixty-nine per month for a copier. He has that money in his account, no new money necessary, and he would like for us to authorize him to enter into that contract. Do I hear a motion to allow Mr. Testor, and then seconded by Mr. Lewis, any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll, please. And the question is to allow Mr. Cobal to enter into that contract for his copier.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
William Campbell.
Because I'm an employee of Carter County, I have no conflict with this vote, but I'm going to see. Yes.
Jerry Crawford.
Aye.
Nancy Graham.
Aye.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Almeen Ham.
Aye.
Beth Pugh, Ronnie Trivitt.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Isaiah Brianstad.
Aye.
Danny Ward.
Aye.
Ross Garland.
Aye.
Timothy Hofer.
Aye.
Bobby Davis.
Aye.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Larry Miller.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Ray Lins.
Aye.
Sandra Coe.
Aye.
Scott Semerly.
Aye.
Cody McQueen.
Aye.
Robert Carroll.
Aye. Aye.
All ayes, you're ready to sign the contract, sir. Thank you. One other item, each of you have on the table in front of you, piece of correspondence that was received in today's mail, and it does require that we read this into the minutes as well as provide you to view with a copy, which we have done. It says, Dear Mayor Humphrey and Commissioners, this letter should be read in the minutes of the next meeting of the county commission with a copy provided to each commissioner. This letter acknowledges receipt of a certified copy of the 2015 fiscal year budget. We have reviewed the budget and have determined that projected revenues and other available funds are sufficient to meet anticipated expenditures. Our review of the budget is based solely on the information we have received and is for determining that the budget appears to be balanced. With regard to programs included in the budget such as education, roads, and corrections, we have not attempted to determine that the local government has complied with specific program statutes or guidelines, or with any financing requirements prescribed by any state or federal agency. A property tax may be included in this budget, and we would recommend that local government officials be certain that all program requirements have been met before initiating the tax collection process. This letter constitutes approval by this office for the county's 2015 fiscal year budget as adopted by the governing body. Considerations concerning the budget. The Office of State and Local Finance has determined that the county's budget meets basic statutory requirements, but we have detected deficiencies outlined below that could possibly lead to financial problems in the future. Fund balance, according to the fiscal year 2015 budget for the general purpose school fund, the county plans to spend thirty-eight point seven six five million with revenues of thirty-eight point seven six six million. The county had a beginning balance of three point one six two million, and if it spends according to the budget, the remaining fund balance is projected to be virtually unchanged. The projected ending fund balance as of the end of fiscal year 2015, however, represents less than one month's average expenditure of three point two three million dollars. And of course, there is a chart there at the top of that second page, and it goes on to say for each of those funds, the general purpose school fund and the school federal projects fund. With regard to the fiscal year 2015 budget for the school federal project fund, the county plans to spend a hundred percent of its expected revenues and projects the fund's ending balance to remain unchanged to nineteen thousand ninety-one dollars. This amount represents less than one month's average expenditure of eighty-five thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars. At this level of spending, the county may not have the necessary working capital to sustain operations until federal grant money is received. State statutes require the county to maintain a balanced budget on a continuing basis and only make expenditures if monies have been appropriated and cash is available. The county commission and the school board should review the working capital for the general purpose school fund and the school federal projects fund to determine the necessary level of cash needed to sustain its operations. We recommend the county commission and the school board use the cash flow analysis statement required by our office for its enterprise fund to analyze its cash requirements for this fund during fiscal year 2014 and to project those requirements for fiscal year 2015. Please send a copy of the results of the analysis to our office by November thirty, twenty fourteen, with recommendations for working capital requirements for each of these funds. Sincerely, Sandra Thompson, Director of the Office of State and Local Finance. Ms. Hendrick, are there anything that you would like to add in reference to this, you and I spoke today?
I'll be glad to. In regards to general purpose school fund, I have preached for the past several years that they do not have this edition fund balance. And in two thousand and eleven, our fund balance stopped at two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. That was a critical stage. I continue to tell you how critical their fund balance is. The school board has been very adamant about working to cut costs and build a fund balance. If you look, from two hundred and twenty-four thousand, three million dollars, they have done a great job in doing that. I do not know why this is just now an issue, it has been an issue for many years, but now the attention is being put at us, so we have an issue from the Comptelers office. In regards to school federal projects fund, that is a misstatement on the Comptelers' plan, that is actually the Head Start fund, if they're quoting there. Head Start is a federal grant, and you are required to spend every dollar that you get when they take the funding away from us. I know no way to fix that. It is a federal grant, we do not charge our participants, we do not charge the taxpayers for that, it is a federal grant and federal grant only. There is no matching portion of that. So tomorrow morning, since we just received this today, tomorrow morning I will contact the Comptelers' office, and I will give you the information that I have on the Head Start fund, and then hopefully we can talk that through. As far as the cash analysis report, and that is not something that was required and was not turned in, that is something they require for an enterprise fund. An enterprise fund is like a utility company, if we had our own utilities, we'd have an enterprise fund. It does not apply to general purpose school at all, and it does not apply to Head Start. However, we can do a cash flow analysis for those funds. I'll be glad to do that. I don't know what it'll prove, but that's what they request, that's what we want to do. Our school board does not meet until December, but we will have a meeting, whether it be a workshop or a meeting, school fund meetings have that. We'll sit down and we'll do that, and then we can recontinue the next budget committee meeting, and then it can be referred all to full commission so that we can satisfy this requirement from the Comptelers. Again, this has been an issue that we have addressed several years in the past, and we're continuing to address. We have plans to build a fund balance in the future, so hopefully within the next month, all this can be taken care of and turned in through the Comptelers' office.
Thank you. So she will be asking for clarification? It's our instinct to comply with the request, and we'll do it within the timeframe specified. And we'll just go from there. Next item, nominating committee, Mr. Trivitt, are you ready, sir?
My minutes are very long, and I'll try to be early, try to get you out of here at eleven o'clock at night, watching you. I'm not going to go over all the minutes, we've got a short form here, and we've got all of the nominations on each of these committees. And I'm going to start out with the jail information research. And the sheriff recommends that we do a whip test, because the state comes in and expects, the grand jury comes in and expects, and the law enforcement committee can vote there any time they want to. So we're going to do a whip at that committee now, probably save us about three thousand dollars. The next program I come to is Carter County Tomorrow Board. And what we done, if somebody on these committees, if there was two openings, we'd have three or four people, we'd vote on each one, and everyone got the most votes, that's who we nominated. So on the Carter County Tomorrow Board, we nominated Danny Ward and Scott Semerly. So I'll make that form of a motion, a motion that we accept these two people.
Mr. Chairman, again, I want to curtail this motion, they've done a tight my terms there. I believe Mr. Arden was forward with some bylaws for Carter County Tomorrow that changes what we discuss.
Mr. Ward.
Yes, at the last meeting we had for nominating, the, I had searched the records and the minutes of the commission. The only bylaws that I found were adopted in two thousand and six, and in those bylaws, it states that the Carter County mayor, the city of Elizabethan, the mayor, and the city of Watauga mayor was served term concurrent with their office, and Elizabethan council members, Carter County commission members, were served one-year term. Since then, I have been informed that apparently the bylaws of Carter County Tomorrow were updated in March of two thousand and ten. A search of the minutes here did not produce any evidence of that in the, in the commission meeting minutes that those were ever adopted, but the actual organization apparently adopted those updated bylaws in two thousand and ten. Those bylaws reflect that the commissioners would serve a term concurrent with their term of service on the commission. And also, under, under state law, TCA six fifty-eight one fourteen, which is kind of what the Carter County Tomorrow was formed under, as the Economic and Community Development Board, a provision in that law says, terms of office shall be determined by the inter-local agreement, but shall be staggered except for the positions held by elected officials whose terms shall coincide with the terms of office for their elected position. You know, obviously, you could easily make the argument, which should be pretty straightforward, that the county commissioner is an elected official. So under that state law and under the updated bylaws that I've had a chance to look at, it appears as though the term would be concurrent with the county commissioner's term for the Carter County Tomorrow Board.
So it'd be one year, am I correct?
No, sir. It would be concurrent with their elected term on the commission. So under that logic, there would be one opening, as Ms. Coeller would still be on that board fulfilling her term.
And she would fill her term out?
She would be serving still on, on the board, yes, sir, for the remainder of her term as a commissioner.
Do you know how long it is, so?
Well, I've been on it two years.
Two years? You know, I'll wait it runs out.
Well.
Well, also, state law provides, that same TCA code I read you, all terms of office shall be for a maximum of four years. So reconciling that with the updated bylaws, she would have two years left.
So we've got two nominees, and Ms. Coeller, so that breaks three, and there's only two openings, is that right, Mr. Chairman, or Mayor?
That's correct.
Okay.
There'll only be one opening if, if you take this in turn place. And my question is, why was not the rules and bylaws of Carter County Tomorrow brought back before the county commission to affirm? Why were they not brought back and affirmed?
I have no idea if that's a requirement, I can ask Mr. LeFort, who's willing to draft the bylaws?
And I'm not certain it's a requirement either, but as searching the records, I found, I did not find it. Obviously, there was a resolution when we recognized Carter County Tomorrow as the entity that was going to oversee this and all, all the other things were going to come under the umbrella of Carter County Tomorrow, that was what the original resolution did, and it included their original bylaws. Those have been updated by the entity. Whether or not they're required to continually update them with us, that's something I'm not aware of either. I did find in the minutes where the industrial development board came back before the commission and updated their bylaws, but as far as a requirement of that, I, I'm not sure either. I just know, from, from my search, it hadn't been done, that doesn't mean it hasn't been done, it's sometimes tedious to look through these minutes and, and find obscure things, but I did not find that.
Well, you know, we're trying to research, I know you spent countless hours in soli by, going back through the minutes that are on record here, to ensure that what we're doing is proper, and occasionally we make a mistake. Right now, I don't know that we have enough information in hand to go ahead and, and to take action on this until we hear back from Carter County Tomorrow's attorney, Sam LeFort, and see what his opinion is as far as whether or not these should have been brought back and see what his opinion is as far as whether or not these should have been brought back and ratified or affirmed by the county commission, since they're one of the major partners in this organization.
I believe they just brought it in line with the TCA code 658-114. They probably changed that, but we can ask Mr. Lord.
And I can't speak as to when the statute was updated or changed, but I will say, the updated bylaws of Carter County Tomorrow appear to be in line with the current requirements of the Tennessee Code annotated. As far as the old bylaws, they differ from the current state laws. So, you know, if they are in conflict, we would obviously err on the side of caution going with the ones that are in line with state law.
Mr. Ward?
With this being said, the... I don't know how to say this exactly, but our term is ending at the election, end of the election, and is open for correction.
That's correct.
So if she finished her term by working off of Richard Testor's term, does that make her term end at that particular four years while in line with the commission? I mean, I was asking, I will ask it correctly or not?
I think you're making a very valid point. Josh?
Well, certainly, like I said, there's a little bit of ambiguity in this thing. You are, obviously, the four-year term, or an elected term did end, and now that we're starting a new term, you know, you can make that argument. Like I say, it's not crystal clear. But be that as it may, she's on the board, and she's currently serving commissioner. You can also make the argument that she serves her commission term up to the four years. That, you know, it's not, it's not clear.
Yes, sir. I assumed I was on the board, so I did attend the meeting on Tuesday. I was the only commissioner at that meeting on Tuesday. And I would love to continue to serve on this board if I'm able to. I just took it upon, granted that I was at that position, so...
Well, I think we all did, because we were researching the bylaws, we had attorney's opinion, and I still am not clear as to whether or not Ms. Culler's term extends, because as the point that you just made, her term ended at the end of August 31, actually, September 1. So what is the wishes of the commission at this point in time? Do you leave it stand in light of the situation and the point raised by Mr. Ward? Or do we go back and revisit it and ask for additional legal opinions? I think an argument can be made either way. What is the wishes of the commission?
Did you say we had two positions open?
We do if her term ended.
But if her term's not ended, we've got one decision.
Right, correct.
Mr. Van Hooch, stand ahead.
This, okay, clarifying, we haven't actually had this situation before. Mr. Lowrance's term ended, of course, he didn't run for reelection. And Ms. Culler, your term didn't, August 31st, so she would need to be reappointed. Now, she may not have been aware that she needed to throw her name in the hat, now that's a different situation, but in this circumstance, there are two, there were two positions open. She came in mid-term after, she finished someone else's term.
Right.
So that's where, that's where my confusion made. So it does, it does end when their office ends, when they're reelected, they need to be reappointed.
With that position and with Mr. Ward's comment, I think that we're safe in going forward, because Ms. Culler did announce that she would like to be considered for this.
And then the two, you had to withdraw my name from the nominations, so I wasn't considered. You and Mr. Hart wanted to say that I was only serving one term and I couldn't run again.
That's based on the information we had, and that still stands at this point, Ms. Culler. So, Mr. Ward?
There's no term limits, sir. There's no term limits. She would be able to, the term on that committee, on that board, is four years, then they have to be reappointed.
Sir, but it ends with the time of elected office. All terms end, and hers ended on August 31st.
Yeah, but does it say her term ends, or her eligibility ends? Is she still eligible to be reappointed? The way I see it, if her term's up, then she's eligible. And we've got these two names, we can add her, and we'll let the whole base of the vote go, if that's what you want.
I think to settle this now, with all the points that have been raised, that's the best point to take. And we're dealing only with the Carter County Tomorrow Board. As the clerk calls the roll, please respond with the two names of the three that are in the mix that you would like to see represent this commission on Carter County Tomorrow. That would be Ward, Sammerly, Culler. Respond with the last name of those three commissioners that you, the two of which you would want to see represent Carter County Tomorrow. Madam Clerk, call the rolls.
Speaker Peters.
Ward.
Culler.
Willie Campbell.
Ward and Culler.
Jerry Prophet.
Ward and Sammerly.
Nancy Brown.
Ward and Sammerly.
Warden.
Sammerly and Culler.
Mike Hill.
Ward and Culler.
Almeen Hand.
Ward and Culler.
Ronnie Trivitt.
Ward and Sammerly.
Charles Van Canon.
Ward and Sammerly.
Elsie Testor.
Ward and Culler.
Isaiah Rynestan.
Ward and Culler. Ward and Culler.
Danny Ward.
Ward and Culler.
Ross Garland.
Ward and Culler.
Timothy Huberman.
Ward and Sammerly.
Bobby Deeds.
Ward and Culler.
Randall Jenkins.
Ward and Culler.
Larry Miller.
Ward and Sammerly.
John Lewis.
Ward and Sammerly.
Ray Lyons.
Sammerly and Culler.
Sonia Culler.
Ward and Culler.
Scott Sammerly.
Ward and Sammerly.
Cody McQueen.
Ward and Culler.
Robert Carroll.
Ward and Sammerly.
Robert Goff.
Ward and Sammerly.
You won't say anything, Mr. Rob, in the long way? It's like twelve, though, if you live.
That's not what I heard. I got twenty-three for Ward. It was unanimous, not... Twenty-two, okay. Thirteen.
Fourteen.
And ten. And ten. Four-seven. Okay, Ms. Culler and Mr. Ward, you will represent the commission on Carter County Tomorrow.
Yeah, it says for one year of Mr. Ward's term.
Now, this is for the term.
They have four years. Next thing we come to, the civil service board. And I got three names here. Jim Wade, John Snyder, Brad Johnson. And I put this in form of a motion, we accept these.
I see that. Second, but Mr. Gobba, any discussion?
No.
Was there any other names at all?
No.
These are sheriff's appointments.
Now, that's the civil service, that's county commissioner's appointment. Sheriff, would you like to say something?
I'm just gonna make a... Although I'm a sheriff, so...
Okay.
Yeah, confirmation by commission.
I'm not stating, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Okay. Let's call the roll.
Speaker Peters. Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Beth, few, Ronnie Trivitt.
Aye.
Charles Van Canon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Isaiah Rynestan.
Aye.
Danny Ward.
Aye.
Ross Garland.
Aye.
Timothy Huberman.
Aye.
Bobby Deeds.
Aye.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Larry Miller.
Aye.
John Lewis. Ray Lyons.
Aye.
Sonia Culler.
Aye.
Scott Sammerly.
Aye.
Sergeant McQueen.
Aye.
Robert Carroll.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All ayes, so those three names will be entered into the record. Let's back up, Chairman. I don't think we actually addressed the first one, the jail information slash research. We didn't take a vote on it, that's for sure, and we didn't address it, so...
We didn't take a vote on it, did we?
No, no, sir. So sheriff, we've looked at that, I've talked with the attorney, there's no statutory or requirement for this particular committee, and with the new jail, it really doesn't serve a purpose. Sheriff, would you like to add something?
I just said, Sheriff Ellis Cobb, if you're welcome over there to the town jail and you can tour if you need to, if you want. I encourage you, basically, I'm just... Sheriff Cobb is part of the jail, but I feel the TCI Inspector, Sheriff. The grand jury does have the authority to inspect the jail upon the coming of a new grand jury. That's Sheriff Ellis Cobb.
And also, the law enforcement, this is just a duplicate of effort. If the law enforcement committee wants to schedule a meeting, you know, we've already been over and did some well through the buildings and grounds, the sheriff and the staff chief have been more than willing to accommodate. So this can save us several thousand dollars this year.
Don't have to do it in the group, you can call them one time.
Okay. With that being said, do you hear a motion to go ahead and dissolve the jail research?
How much of the motion?
I think Mr. Trivitt made the motion, we need a second, but Ms. Brown? Okay. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Speaker Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet.
Aye.
Nancy Brown. Mike Hill.
Aye.
Almeen Hand.
Aye.
Beth, few, Ronnie Trivitt.
Aye.
Charles Van Canon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Isaiah Rynestan.
Aye.
Danny Ward.
Aye.
Ross Garland.
Aye.
Timothy Huberman.
Aye.
Bobby Deeds. Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Larry Miller.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Ray Lyons.
Aye.
Sergeant Culler.
Aye.
Scott Sammerly.
Aye.
Cody McQueen.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Robert Carroll.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All ayes, going to the next one, Chairman.
Next one is work release. This is sheriff's appointments. We have three names down here. Roger Dale, Russell Kite, and Joe Lunsford. And I put that in form of a motion that we accept these.
Sir, could we go ahead and also outline the two alternates, I think?
Yeah, I'll make that, and two alternatives, Robbie Cribbs and Robert Crowe, which if somebody's out, they will fill in with no better.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Chairman Trivitt, second by Mr. Lewis, any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Speaker Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet. Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Almeen Hand.
Aye.
Ronnie Trivitt.
Aye.
Charles Van Canon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Isaiah Rynestan.
Aye.
Danny Ward.
Aye.
Ross Garland.
Aye.
Timothy Huberman.
Aye.
Bobby Deeds.
Aye.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Larry Miller.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Ray Lyons.
Aye.
Sergeant Culler.
Aye.
Scott Sammerly.
Aye.
Cody McQueen.
Aye.
Robert Carroll.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All ayes, continue on, Chairman.
Next, we have the beer board. We have Almeen Hand, Jerry Prophet, Nancy Brown, Beth, few, Ms. Bobby, and Randall Jenkins. And I make the votes, we accept those six to the beer board.
Motion made by Ms. Trivitt, second, Ms. Culler, any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Speaker Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Almeen Hand.
Aye.
Beth, few, Ronnie Trivitt.
Aye.
Charles Van Canon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Isaiah Rynestan.
Aye.
Danny Ward.
Aye.
Ross Garland.
Aye.
Timothy Huberman.
Aye.
Bobby Deeds.
Aye.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Larry Miller.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Ray Lyons.
Aye.
Sonia Culler.
Aye.
Scott Sammerly.
Aye.
Cody McQueen.
Aye.
Robert Carroll.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All ayes.
All ayes, next item, Mr. Chairman.
Next item, financial management. There's four openings for financial management. Mr. Charles Van Canon, Danny Ward, Bobby Deeds, Ray Lyons. I put that in form of votes, we accept these four people.
Is there a second? Mr. Rynestan, any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Speaker Peters.
Aye.
Speaker Peters. I'm sorry.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Almeen Hand.
Aye.
Beth, few, Ronnie Trivitt.
Aye.
Charles Van Canon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Isaiah Rynestan.
Aye.
Danny Ward.
Aye.
Ross Garland.
Aye.
Timothy Huberman.
Aye.
Bobby Deeds.
Aye.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Larry Miller.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Ray Lyons.
Aye.
Sergeant Culler.
Aye.
Scott Sammerly.
Aye.
Cody McQueen.
Aye.
Robert Carroll.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All ayes.
Next item, sir.
Got one more, you know, the Carter County Board of Health, and we had one nomination, Mr. Tim Hofer. So I make a motion, we accept it.
Second, the Ms. Deeks, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Speaker Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet.
Aye.
Nancy Brown. Mike Hill.
Aye.
Almeen Hand.
Aye.
Beth, few, Ronnie Trivitt. Charles Van Canon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Isaiah Rynestan.
Aye.
Danny Ward.
Aye.
Ross Garland.
Aye.
Timothy Huberman.
Aye.
Bobby Deeds.
Aye.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Larry Miller.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Ray Lyons.
Aye.
Sergeant Culler.
Aye.
Scott Sammerly.
Aye.
Cody McQueen.
Aye.
Robert Carroll.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All ayes, next item, sir.
Next item is Carter County Planning, Regional Planning Commission. And we have left the nominees. And I'm gonna call these out. First, District State Peers. Second, Rap Watson. Third, Jerry Gierman. Fourth, Jerry Smith. Fifth, Jamie Hughes. Fifth, Mary Ann Patton. Sixth, Randall Jenkins. Sixth, Ken Arney. Seventh, Ray Lyons. Arney, seventh, Ray Lyons, eighth, Sandra Culler, eighth, Robert Carroll. I make the motion, we accept this.
Second. Two seconded first, Mr. Campbell, motion made by Ms. Crivitt, second, Mr. Campbell, any discussion?
I got something.
Mr. Carroll.
I know we're all hungry, but we've been talking about getting it right. I think we have. We can't, we cannot elect these names to this planning commission. Now, Mr. Ward was talking a while ago about not knowing certain things that was going on, but there's a handbook that you can read, and it'll explain a lot of stuff to you. There's other areas we can go to to find out what we're supposed to do. Now, I don't know if any of you looked at that private act or not, but I did. It's online, and Mr. Von Cannon likes page numbers, it's page number 136, I believe, in them private acts. Now, the language that that private act says, there's not less than seven, and not more than twelve. I see no language in that private act that says we can't have any number between seven and twelve. Now, I know the 2000 resolution says that they're supposed to be twelve. But if you look at these things, both of them, it says that there shall be equal representation. If you look at what we presented here, now, I'm in the budget, I was in my legislature, and I voted for this, and I did it through English. But I like to go back and check, I'm an old man, I'm kind of slow, and I forget a lot of things. I like to go back and check. The way we're presenting this, we have two people in the fifth district. I know the mayor wants Mary Ann Patton, because she's a realtor, but we can't put Mary Ann Patton on it in the fifth district, because Jamie Hughes is tied on it. If we put both of them on, there'll be two people in the fifth district that is not equal representation. Randall Jenkins and Ken Arney in the sixth, that's not equal representation. Ray Lyons and Sandra Culler in the seventh, that's not equal representation. And then there's old Robert Carroll in the eighth district. Now, listen, I'm not doing this for you to put me on there. If you want to pick somebody that's qualified in the eighth district outside of me, that's fine, I don't have any problem with that. But then I guess the chairman is supposed to be number twelve. Now, that don't, what we're presenting to, what we're presenting to the full commission tonight does not meet the provisions of that private act. And if you go back and look at it, you can find out that it doesn't. I don't think that the chairman, there's only eleven on there, and I don't think the chairman can be added to this mix. The chairman, the mayor, he's already elected by right. He's an ex officio member of every committee, so I don't think we can have him in this, in this mix. Now, sixth district, we'll have to vote. I don't think we can, I really don't think we can elect Mr. Ken Arney, because we're supposed to represent the people of the district. The people of this sixth district elected Randall Jenkins. I think it's, that was, yeah, Mr. Jenkins, the sixth district. The people of sixth district said we want Randall Jenkins to represent us. Now, I'm going to go back and say something, and I hope you folks don't get mad at me, but I'm going to say this anyway. In the third district, and I'm not attacking nobody, personally, I don't know you guys personal, though you want to see it, but in the third district, Mr. Jerry Pierman, who was a commissioner, he ran for reelection in the third district, and the people in the third district said, we don't want him to represent us. But then the commission said, yeah, we want Mr. Pierman to represent you, so you put him on. So I'm saying that we do not want to put people on there that the district that they're in doesn't want to represent us. We're supposed to be working for the people. Now, again, Mr. Mayor wants a realtor on, if you find a realtor in the eighth district and say, we don't want to put you on there, Robert, that's fine with me. Now, I think we all have people who, who have the experience, the background, that they need to do this. And ladies and gentlemen, tonight, this is not, I'm not talking about saving money. The money we'll save on this is a drop in the bucket. Now, if you want to talk about saving money, we'll talk about that in the budget, I'm all for it. Okay, but I'm not here saying this about saving money. It's not about the mayor, and it's not about Mr. Crivitt, it's not about any of these guys, it's about getting it right. And if we elect these people, we are going against what that private act says. Let's elect people equal representation in these districts. Now, I don't know if I can do this, because I'm a new commissioner too, but I would like to make a motion that we ask the attorneys to prepare a resolution, if we need to, to amend not the private act, but the 2000 resolution from twelve members to eight members, or nine members, whatever you want to do there. Now, we have, on our standing committee, we have eight people, so I think eight is probably the right number. Now, you guys can check this out, but you can find a lot of information in our handbook and C-Pass, and also online with these private acts. They're pretty boring, so after all the way down to page 136 to find this, but equal representation.
I have, I had a motion on the floor, Mrs. Carroll, and I think someone said that we left the ones that I named, and I called that, is that correct?
Correct.
Now, you can amend that budget if you'd like. So that makes that motion.
I can amend the motion if we're ready.
Mr. Testor.
Several times, leaving. Chris Ship will rock to the board. He advertised it, brought it to the, brought it to this committee, we looked at this over, he showed us what he said, there were much discussion, two different meetings, and this was the mayor's recommendation. We spent already two meetings on this, and I'd like to see us move forward with this.
I have a motion.
Question on the motion, second. Second. We have the motion in second already.
Question on the motion.
Question on the motion, we'll call roll, and then if the results don't pass, then we'll have to adjust at that point in time. But Mr. Carroll's points are well taken. This is the opportunity to fix this now. You don't have to wait four years for the day to fix it. It's just one of those things that there's been a problem with, and whether it be nine member or twelve member, what difference it may. But it does take the nine member to give you equal representation, and that's what the private act calls for. Madam Clerk, call roll please.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet. Nancy Brown. Mike Hill.
Aye.
Al Mehan.
Aye.
Beth DePue, Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Rocker pass.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Isaiah Brannenstam. Danny Ward.
No.
Ross Garland.
Aye.
Timothy Huberman.
No.
Bobby Diggs.
Aye.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Larry Miller.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Ray Lyons.
Aye.
Sandra Culler.
Aye.
Scott Sammerly.
No.
Cody McQueen.
No.
Robert Carroll.
No.
Robert Goff.
No. I'd like to change my vote to no.
Thirteen ayes, nine noes. Planning commission is set, next item.
Next item is Board of Zoning Appeals. That's Jeff Tredway, Brad Johnson, Curtis Cannon, Elsie Testor, Davison Lord. I make the motion, we accept those.
Aye.
Second by Ms. Culler, any discussion? Madam Clerk, call roll please.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Al Mehan.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Isaiah Brannenstam.
Aye.
Danny Ward.
Aye.
Ross Garland.
Aye.
Timothy Huberman.
Aye.
Bobby Diggs.
Aye.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Larry Miller.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Ray Lyons.
Aye.
Sandra Culler.
Aye.
Scott Sammerly.
Aye.
Cody McQueen.
Aye.
Robert Carroll.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All ayes. All ayes.
All ayes, next item, please.
The next item is Records Committee. And I've been nominated for that, and so has Mr. Cody McQueen here. So I'll make the motion, we accept this to the Records Committee.
Just for the record, since you're our own committee and any conflict...
I promise, let's, may I speak with the motion?
Mr. Gobbo, you've made the motion, and I hear second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis, any discussion? Call roll please.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Al Mehan.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Isaiah Brannenstam.
Aye.
Danny Ward.
Aye.
Ross Garland.
Aye.
Timothy Huberman.
Aye.
Bobby Diggs.
Aye.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Larry Miller.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Ray Lyons.
Aye.
Sandra Culler.
Aye.
Scott Sammerly.
Aye.
Cody McQueen.
Pass.
Pass. Robert Carroll.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
Do you want to change your vote?
No, his, his response was proper, thanks Cody, you paid attention. Next item, Mr. Chairman.
The next item is State Protection Committee. And we had about three people on there, and Mr. Jenkins agreed to pull off and let Mr. Goff and then Charles Von Cannon stay on there. And I found out for a reason that Ross Garland's on there, because Charlie Bayless wants you to have him fix his garden, he wants you to learn how to farm. So I make the motion, we accept those, State Protection Committee.
Motion's been made, the chairman, second by Mr. Ward. Ms. Culler.
I want to type this up, and I apologize, I probably should have put my name on there as an existing member of that committee.
Well, we acknowledge that, your term's not up yet, it expires, I think, in February, and there's two other people likewise, so there's going to be more opportunities for those farm men and farm women that would like to serve on this committee. With that, we've got the motion in second, any other discussion? Call roll please.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet.
Aye.
Nancy Brandt.
Aye.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Al Meehan.
Aye.
Beth Dupree, Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Isaiah Brownstein.
Aye.
Danny Ward.
Aye.
Ross Carlin.
Aye.
Timothy Huglin.
Aye.
Bobby Dees.
Aye.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Larry Miller.
Aye.
Robert.
Aye.
Ray Lyons. Sancho Carter.
Aye.
Scott Samley.
Aye.
Cody McQueen.
Aye.
Robert Carroll.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye. All ayes, next item, Mr. Chairman.
Next item is Cardiac Emergency 911. We have Sheriff Dexter Lunsford, and Gary Smith, they're here, hey, press, I made the motion, we accept those.
Second, Mr. Brownstaff, any other discussion, see none, Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet.
Aye.
Nancy Brandt.
Aye.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Al Meehan.
Aye.
Beth Dupree, Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon. Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Isaiah Brownstein.
Aye.
Danny Ward.
Aye.
Ross Carlin.
Aye.
Timothy Huglin.
Aye.
Bobby Dees.
Aye.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Larry Miller.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Ray Lyons.
Aye.
Sancho Carter.
Aye.
Scott Samley.
Aye.
Cody McQueen.
Aye.
Robert Carroll.
Aye.
Ross Goff.
Aye.
All ayes, next item, sir.
Next item is East Tennessee Railroad Authority. And we got Charles Von Cannon, he wants to bring in which railroad that makes Cardiac. But I reckon, I reckon, we accept this in the nomination.
Second. Secondly, Mr. McQueen, any discussion, Madam Clerk, call roll please.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet. Nancy Brandt.
Aye.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Al Meehan.
Aye.
Beth Dupree, Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Isaiah Brownstein.
Aye.
Danny Ward.
Aye.
Ross Carlin.
Aye.
Timothy Huglin.
Aye.
Bobby Dees.
Aye.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Larry Miller.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Ray Lyons.
Aye.
Sancho Carter.
Aye.
Scott Samley.
Aye.
Cody McQueen.
Aye.
Robert Carroll.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All ayes, next item, sir.
Next item is Animal Shelter Advisor Board, and Mr. Cody McQueen volunteered for that, so I make the motion, we accept that.
Second by Ms. Brown, in discussion, see none, call roll please.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet.
Aye.
Nancy Brandt. Mike Hill.
Aye.
Al Meehan.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Isaiah Brownstein.
Aye.
Danny Ward.
Aye.
Ross Carlin.
Aye.
Timothy Huglin.
Aye.
Bobby Dees.
Aye.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Larry Miller.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Ray Lyons.
Aye.
Sancho Carter.
Aye.
Scott Samley.
Aye.
Cody McQueen.
Aye.
Robert Carroll.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye. All ayes, next items.
Next item we have is Health Education Advisor Board, and we're going to dissolve that, so I make the motion, we dissolve that committee.
Ms. Brown, second. Second, Ms. Brown, any discussion? No statutory requirements for that, and it's not active. Education Committee could pick up anything that would be dealt with here as far as Education Committee. Madam Clerk, call roll please.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet.
Aye.
Nancy Brandt.
Aye.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Al Meehan.
Aye.
Beth Dupree. Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Isaiah Brownstein.
Aye.
Danny Ward.
Aye.
Ross Carlin.
Aye.
Timothy Huglin.
Aye.
Bobby Dees.
Aye.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Larry Miller.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Ray Lyons.
Aye.
Sancho Carter.
Aye.
Scott Samley. Cody McQueen.
Aye.
Robert Carroll.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All ayes, next item.
Another is Animal Control Board, we can dissolve that, so I'll make that the form of the motion.
Second, Mr. Meehan, any discussion, see none, call roll please.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet.
Aye.
Nancy Brandt. Mike Hill.
Aye.
Al Meehan.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Isaiah Brownstein.
Aye.
Danny Ward.
Aye.
Ross Carlin.
Aye.
Timothy Huglin.
Aye.
Bobby Dees.
Aye.
Randall Jenkins.
Aye.
Larry Miller.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Ray Lyons.
Aye.
Sancho Carter. Scott Samley.
Aye.
Cody McQueen.
Aye.
Robert Carroll.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
Anything else, Mr. Chairman?
Parking rec, but it's worth while to come back with that.
Yeah, there's parking rec and more to others that we probably need to go ahead and eliminate, but parking rec will have to be advertised. And I would ask that when we're on parking rec, the mayor will appoint the liaison between the commission parking rec. If there's any of you that have an interest in that particular committee, it will be composed of eight members, we will advertise for that, taking into consideration the folks that we have, and we'll try to do equal representation, that's requirement in statute as amended. So if you would please, submit those names to me so that I can review that before the next meeting. Anything else, Mr. Chairman?
No, that's all, thank you.
That concludes the nominated committee, let's move on to education, Mr. Von Cannon, is anything you have for us today?
As quoted, Mr. Scott, a letter from Charles Curtis, a man we met at Dunfermline. Concerning remarks he had made about the voucher system. And the fact that it had been, that it had been passed. In April of this year, the Tennessee Senate passed School Voucher Bill. With the help of $2,010 from one PAC, you know what a PAC is, Political Action Committee. They were put together to lobby for certain bills and whatever, similar to what we've done here in, in getting our message across about what committee we'd like to be on. Another PAC spent $240,000, and another PAC spent $250,000. So, the Tennessee Senate passed the best education bill that money could buy. That had to do with, with this successful effort to pass the Tennessee Choice and Opportunity Scholarship Act, which allows children in failing schools to use educational funds to attend non-public schools of their choice. The bill included funding to give up to 5,000 children the opportunity to attend a school of their parents' choice. Without taking a position, here's what I found. And what prompted that was the letter from, the research, the letter from Charles Curtis. Students first, one of these PACs was headed by Michelle Ray. Michelle Ray happened to be the wife of Kevin Houghlin. So, that's not hard to figure out. DEA also has PAC money, they have about $300,000 or $500,000 to fight things of this sort. I called Senator Crowe today, and the good news is, the bill did not pass in the House of Representatives. This would've, in my opinion, caused real problems, Dr. Ward, for the system, or could have. Therefore, we don't need any more students leaving the system, because some are already leaving for Elizabethan. Be that as it may, I want to try to, as your Chairman of Education, keep you informed about things that I know that are occurring. For example, I'm on the, and a lot of you don't know this, I guess, I preach Tennessee Human Development Agency that oversees or does some oversight for things like Head Start and whatever. Now therefore, Carter County has 153 students enrolled in Head Start. The bad news is, they have a waiting list of 30 some, 38 maybe, children. The feeding of the children this past month, in the seven or eight districts that the Human Development Agency hits, costs $44,785.28 for breakfasts, lunch, and a snack. These are the kind of things you may or may not know about, you may or may not be interested in. But this is the kind of thing that I think needs to be brought to the table occasionally for people that don't see this sort of thing. Mr. Blanton, I compliment you, sir, very thorough. I don't know many people that would've spent the time we did researching a piece of money. That's neither here nor there, I just compliment myself for my record. I would say this, I would caution you as a Secretary for these committee meetings to proofread, I'd say I compliment you, your dictionary's helped you a lot. The other thing is, I have it in my hand. Thirty-four errors. Some are grammar, some are spelling. And this shouldn't be, this needs to be corrected, because these go into permanent records. These go into permanent records, and 20 years from now, somebody reads this and they have a big laugh. This is not the way we're gonna have to do business. I'm not against misspelling, I'm against not proofreading. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, another thing on.
I do believe that we have a gentleman in the audience that Dr. Ward is going to speak on the Education Department.
Mr. Ward, I'll recognize him at the time, I've got a few other items to go through, I think so.
That would be empty, Chair.
So are you finished, Mr. Chairman?
I'm finished, and by the way, all of you need to be, that's in the school system, a member of NAA and DEA, correct?
Thanks, sir. Another item, please bear with me for just a minute, and I'm gonna make an appeal to you. You know Governor Haslam has challenged our state with a critical new mission, and that's called Drive to 55. To drive to get 55% of Pennsycans equipped with a college degree or certificate by the year 2025. Currently, only 23.4% of adults in Carter County have an associate or higher. This is a mission for higher education, a mission for Carter County's future workforce and continued economic development. Tennessee Promise is one of the Drive to 55 initiatives. Promise is a scholarship and mentoring program that will begin with the high school senior class of 2015. It will provide students a last dollar scholarship, meaning it will cover tuition and fees not covered by the Pell Grant, Pope Scholarship, or Tennessee Student Assistant Award. Students may use the scholarship at any of the state's 13 community colleges, 27 colleges of applied technology or other eligible institutions offering an associate's degree program. In September, Tennessee Cheese was designated as the county's partnering organization. It provides students with mentoring and community service opportunities. Also, at that time, an advisory board was established to further support this effort. The board consists of the county mayor, Dean Blevins, Director of Tennessee College of Applied Technologies at Elizabethan, Chris Heichu, Director of Northeast State Community Colleges, Elizabethan Campus, Mr. Rusty Barnett, Chairman of the Carter County Board of Education, and Mr. Danny McLean, Secondary School Supervisor with Carter County School System. As of Monday, the 13th, October 13th, 311 students have made application with Promise. The number is higher than originally anticipated, and enrollments are expected to progressively increase right up to the November 1 deadline. Currently, 50 individuals have signed up to be mentors. However, this number is short of the actual need. Each of you have been provided an information sheet which outlines what is required to become a mentor. The estimated annual time commitment to assist up to five high school students is a mere 10 to 15 hours, and that, again, that's annual for the total. Many of you have backgrounds in education, you're graduates yourself. I ask that you please review this information, and if at all possible, apply by November 1 and attend the mandatory training on December 15th for mentors. With this, I think you can take pride in knowing that a small investment of your time has made a significant difference in the lives of the first generation students that would have otherwise not had an opportunity to continue their education. So if you would, please take a look at that. Dr. Ward, you would like to address the commission under the Education Committee?
Yes, that's proper, see, I guess, under the Education Committee or the recognition of action at this time, if you prefer, if that's okay.
Yes, sir, time for.
First of all, let me, let me say that I'm not here to ram anything down your throat. I'm here to talk to you about some discussion that the Board and I have had, and basically to develop the dialogue, we need the dialogue to be forward. The communication that this group as a whole, Budget Committee as an entity, this group and the Education Committee as another entity, and the dialogue with the Education Department at Orkansfield is very critical. Very critical in the importance of addressing the needs of our students. Like I said, I'm not here to ask you to look for nothing. I'm here to talk to you about what we feel like is the best interest and direction we need to go at this time. The Carter County Board of Education, myself, feel like at this time, there's a better option. They could be put on the table instead of purposing plans for Yankton High School and putting those plans on a shelf. Board of Education, myself, has agreed that we'll not be approaching the funding body during the 15, 16 budget year, that's the upcoming budget year. And they seek, or in looking to try and develop approval for a new Yankton High School with Palm Storm Creek. Instead, the Board, my staff and myself, would prefer to take the extra time needed to communicate and create a productive dialogue with this commission, with the Budget Committee, and with our Educational Committee. We want to take the time to answer questions that's been asked. Questions regarding disciple passion. We want to take the time to visit schools, the three schools in particular, King Burgh, Hunter, United Elementary, or any other, and all other schools that you all would like to visit. If it takes over two buses, we'd like to load two buses, and we'd like to create this conversation. We'd like to engage in a conversation and talk about financial savings. That a project on Highway Name One, Palm Storm Creek, that we could see in terms of benefits from that project. We'd like to talk about the academic benefits, benefits of having a K-4, a 5-8, a 9-12 alignment. This alignment has been very, very productive over the years in the Havant Valley District with the elementary, K-4, with the middle school, 5-8, and with the high school, 9-12. At this time, we'd like to take advantage of having this extra time to explain all the facilities and the benefits to our children and our students of Carter County. We'd like to talk about the benefits it would be to our children by getting rid of 23 of the 48 modules that we have located in Carter County or at the Carter County Schools. That's part of the business that we'd like to take with you so that you can see the modules, see the shapes, see the sizes, some of which are 1970 units, some of which are new. Still, we're talking about module classrooms and warehouses, and a total lot of kids are making in Carter County, in particular, at King Burgh, Hunter, and you may be at Elementary District. We'd also like to start this discussion, and over this period of time, we'd like to talk about our short and long-term strategies as it relates to our facility and our planning. The Board of Education's goal, and my goal, working on behalf of the Board of Education, is to look at the best use of our taxpayers' dollars in the benefit of our children for Carter County. And in creating this dialogue, and creating this discussion, I think we can all maybe come to some kind of consensus and decision in terms of what's in the best interest of the system and our children. If I drive around, if it wasn't for the children, I wouldn't be here. Now, what I have is two options, basically, and I'm gonna give you some, I'm gonna pass out some paperwork here. On this paperwork, it pretty much has scribble notes, but on this scribble notes, I think, I can read my handwriting, but I'm gonna explain the scribble notes. We have two options. We pursue with the design plan that has been booked before vote for the $800,000, which would in turn give Carter County schools about $500,000 to do design plans, and then it'd be sending, I guess, $300,000 or so dollars to the city of Elizabethan, city schools. We can put those on a shelf for a year and a half, two years, come back, talk about it, but we still got paper on the shelf on that option. Our Board feels like there's a better way to look at this. Our Board feels like at that now, what we should do and should approach our funding body with. And we'll pass you out some sheets here in just a second. Our second option, and the Board proposal and my presentation, will be to pay off school debt. Let me give you some paperwork, and then I'll explain.
Dr. Ward, these items that you're proposing tonight, are you expecting an action to be taken this evening?
No, sir.
Okay.
No vote whatsoever, the only thing that I would like to do is once I explain what I'm gonna show you here, is maybe, I think it would be appropriate for us to meet with the Budget Committee at some point in time, next month or in December, and have further discussion.
Mr. West, the Committee for, for, to you.
We do, so, Dr. Ward, if you would please, if you pass that out, let them digest that, and then we could come back, you can contact me, and we'll get you. Since you're not requiring any action tonight.
Well, it's very important that I finish my presentation in order for them to understand.
How much more time do you anticipate, sir?
Ten minutes.
Five minutes, sir.
Scratch notes that you said at the bottom of the page, or note. Scratch notes that you said at the bottom of the page, or notes that, basically, as number one, two, and three, Cloudon Elementary, United High School, and Cloudon High School. At the very top of the page, you'll notice Cloudon Elementary, number one, United High School, number two, number three, Cloudon High School. Out from each one of those lines at the top of the page, you're going to see what the county schools is indebted for and for how long. As you look out through there, you'll see interest rate, principal owed, interest, and total remaining. What we're proposing is to take the eight-hundred thousand dollars, in which we'll have to give the city no money, but basically, we're paying it toward debt. That eight-hundred thousand dollars can be applied in one-hundred percent toward paying off some of the school debt. Cloudon Elementary, there's still six-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars. There's a payment that's up, that's due in fourteen, fifteen, and I'll put it at three-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand. There's another payment that's due in fifteen, sixteen, which that note could pay off, if you look up in your payoff data notes right above it there, five-twenty-six, two thousand and sixteen. So, in a year and a half, Cloudon Elementary, the second note on Cloudon Elementary, I thought we had paid for all of Cloudon Elementary, there's evidently a second note, will pay off on five-twenty-six of two thousand and sixteen. United High School, there's five-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-two-dollar notes. There's a fourteen, fifteen payment of eighty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars. We propose applying the four-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty dollars, apply it toward the eight-hundred thousand, which would leave the three-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand dollar balance. Let's pay off the United High School note, let's get it out of debt, because the interest savings on that is fifty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars we save for the taxes. Cloudon High School, that's the largest note we've got. Remember, we pay off United High School, and a year and a half, Cloudon Elementary will come off, and then the largest note that we've got left is Cloudon High School. This is the note where, back a few years ago, we replaced modular classrooms, Cloudon built permanent classrooms, it was called the Middle School Wing, and then also in this note, I think, were maybe a roof and projects or something else. There's two million, there are two million, five-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand dollars. There's a payment this year that's going to come off of it, a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. That puts us at two-hundred-and-fourteen, two million, four-hundred-and-nineteen thousand. Apply the remainder balance of the eight-hundred thousand dollars that was going to be used for drafting plans that will sit on the shelf for a year, year and a half. Apply this three-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand dollars to the two-point-four-one-nine million, and that will leave us two million, ninety-seven thousand dollars and some change. There's also, which is not listed on your paperwork, there's also a fifteen and sixteen, one-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars that will come off of that. So, at the end of the fifteen and sixteen fiscal year, there'll be one million, nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars owed on Cloudon High School. By doing this, we've estimated there's approximately twenty-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars in interest that can be saved on this project. So for a total, if you look down there in the very right-hand corner, for a total interest saved on United and Cloudon, it's going to be about seventy-four thousand, one-hundred-and-five dollars that we could save in interest on these two projects. Before I go out and shop for a car at the house, before I go out and buy a major product, I'm going to get my finances in order. We would like to get our finances in order. This eight-hundred thousand dollars in paying off school debt is a prudent way to use the taxpayers' money rather than buying plans, draft plans, and putting them on shelf right now. Let's pay off some debt, and let's develop a dialogue. Let's develop the dialogue, let's have an honest and genuine conversation about what's in the best interest of the students of Carter County. And I'd like to do that, and I'd like to start that in a meeting with the Budget Committee in the very near future.
I would like to invite Mr. Ward to the Budget Committee next month to discuss the differences he has.
That's not a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Ward, you know, I commend the school board for taking action to, one, to step back and, and take a look at finances before we take any action making a long-term, twenty-plus-year commitment. One thing that I would ask, and I think is first and foremost, if the school board wants to proceed with this or any other major capital expenditure funds and obligate taxpayer, I think this commission needs to see a long-range capital improvement plan. They haven't seen that. And I think that should be the school board, you put that plan together and then start the dialogue, because without that, sir, I mean, it should cover all facilities. We need to know the feasibility of, and what school should come first when we're ready to build. You haven't provided that. So I would recommend that you put that together and then come and start the dialogue, then we'll all be in a position where we'll be better able to understand and get behind this, and at that point in time, we can, sir, I think.
And that was part of the, part of the whole plan, initiate the dialogue, talk about all those different points, go and visit and look at school and look at the condition of these schools. We're talking about fifty-year schools, and we're talking about schools that you would think that's in pretty poor shape, but it's in pretty good condition when it comes right down to it. Over the years, like I said, I've said this two or three times in the last two or three weeks, our taxpayers and that half a pin over the last seven years has made a tremendous and huge difference in what we've been able to do in terms of updating our facilities. Now, Mr. Mayor, what I would like to do, the first thing I think that we need to address is, and I'm going to agree, we have to have a long-term...
We've got to have a long-range plan for it.
We need to bring this to the table, and we need to make a decision, and that's why we'd like to go through the Budget Committee, and we'd like to develop further discussion on this particular matter of this money, and then let's pay off some debt, and then in a year and a half, we've got time to bring a long-term, short-term...
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
As well as our concerns.
Mr. Von Ken, I think that we need to...
I've got to ask one question, and it's very important. Have you led the Architectural Project Act on the new school?
No, sir.
That's good.
No, sir.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next committee. Landfill. Ms. Deeks, is there anything that you have?
I have nothing to add to the report, continue.
Highway Committee, Mr. Hill.
We elected officers, there was a small matter about a speed limit change in a road that's been DMSed to be paved for quite a while, that was put out for research, and that's really all that happened.
Rules and bylaws, Mr. Jenkins, any?
Chairman, boss, secretary.
You're ready to go.
Nothing to add right now.
Billings and grounds, Mr. Lyons.
Yes, sir, we elected officers, Troy Lons' chairman, Lydia Campbell, vice-chairman, Cody McLean, secretary. We were also invited to tour the jail very next day, with Sheriff, Sheriff Lunsford, the chief parish, took us through the old jail. We have pictures online of all that, I have those in my hand. It's very impressive to go and do those tour visits, that maybe Dr. Ward was talking about as well. We were also invited to the Carter County Health Department, that's tomorrow at six p.m. We had a presentation from Caroline Hurt, she's the director of the Carter County Health Department, spoke, and I was really stunned by the shape, at least the way she explained it, the health department is in. She needs help. We'll know more about that when we tour the, tour the, the health department tomorrow, I speak with her. I would like to say just a couple of things, I know it's late. We, as, as we were touring the sheriff's department, we looked at the apartment, the parking lot, which is also already in the process of being taken care of, we talked about the jail, the old jail, in terms of what we're going to do with that, turn that into some kind of revenue source, I think. We talked about space analysis, it's already been done on the old jail, no new money. We also spoke with the sheriff, we spoke with the new sessions judge, we visited his courtroom. We actually looked, and he showed us what improvements need to be made in that courtroom. We toured and spoke with, I think, I'm pretty sure, we went into criminal court, we did not speak with the criminal court judge. But in saying everything that I've said at this point, I was impressed to see the Sheriff Lunsford, the sessions judge, and the two criminal judges have agreed, my understanding, have agreed to work together as a team and try to do something about our system. Very impressed, sir, very impressed, that's all I have.
Yeah, there's, there's several opportunities right now, and working together, we can make that happen, and there's a lot of work to be done over there, not going to be complaining here in the next few weeks, but we appreciate the sheriff, and reference that parking lot, we appreciate Mr. Robert Cobal coming to the table, so we're putting together a plan, and I think we'll see substantial savings once we put this online. Now, keep in mind, it's not going to all be complete the parking lot this fall, it's going to take in the next spring, but it's really going to be a substantial savings, probably well over a hundred thousand dollars just on the parking lot itself, based on the old numbers that we have. So working together collectively makes a difference. Now, let's go to law enforcement, Mr. Bryant-Stayer.
Yes, I had our meeting, we were able to inform ourselves, I've been elected chairman, Mr. Holm, elected as vice-chair, and Mr. Jenkins, elected as secretary. We had public comments by Sheriff Lunsford, also Brian, of course, as part of that Building and Grounds Committee to attend, and Inspector Bill, Inspector of Facilities, and we were very attentive to that outreach. Mr. Sheriff Lunsford did mention that the population of the jail at that time was two-seventeen.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
No, no.
Health and welfare, Mr. Holm, is there anything you have to offer?
Yes, we met the same evening, and we, I was elected chairman, of course, and we had two, vice-chairman and secretary voted in, in abstention. I have not, their authorization as of yet. Mr. Al Meehan was voted as vice-chairman, and Ms. Beth Hughes was voted as secretary. I would like to speak with them and make sure that they are okay with this nomination and move forward with that.
Thank you, sir. Also, that evening, you had set a tentative meeting date of November the sixth. There has been a conflict, and I think there's been some email communications and texting back and forth. Currently, that meeting is now set for November the thirteenth at six p.m. So I just wanted to make certain that everybody was on board with that. Again, buildings and grounds, law enforcement, and the like, November the sixteenth. Next item, are there any other committee reports at all?
Did you say building grounds, sixteenth or thirteenth?
Chairman, I would like to bring up that I didn't notice that the utility had done anything as far as the utility committee.
Utility, utility committee had not, and that's a thing that we'll address next month, cable and utility. I think that's one of those committees that really need to be eliminated, and we'll bring that final list and file, bring, make everything final next month, because...
Well, I do have some information from the cable company that needs to be passed on to somebody, so it's slightly out of the loop.
Would you want to pass that along?
Well, I don't have it with me, it was given to me months ago, I tried to come up for the contract, our contract had been out for two years, and I'm waiting on the general national contract.
Are you talking about franchising? Which cable company is it, ma'am? Most of those are handled at the state level now, there was a change a few years back, so those franchises are not done here locally, of course.
They contacted me and said that the contract needed to be redone, and they've been bringing it to me, and I gave my information, how to contact me, the gentleman hasn't contacted me yet.
Okay, if you afford that or advance it on to me, then we'll take care of it if it's a matter of...
They've restricted it to me, so they will get back to it.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, let's move on to county terms.
I'll be brief, considering the hour. As far as litigation update, there is no new information this month on independent litigation with the exception of the Crowell, Crowell, the Carter County Beer Board case that is resulting from the county's denial of a beer permit. There's a hearing set in that case on October twenty-seventh at one-thirty, and basically, there's stipulations of facts, it's not going to be a full-blown trial, and the judge is going to basically consider those stipulations and make a ruling, and I hope, from the way it looks right now, that, that appears as though it will be favorable for the county, so we're hopeful there. As far as my time this month, obviously substantial amount of time spent on committee appointment, research, and speaking with individual commissioners about that, attended the nominating in Budget Committee meetings, researched several issues for the, a couple for the Highway Department, one for the Register of Deeds, one for the Sheriff's Office, prepared the resolutions for each, not, obviously. And in response to a question last month, I, I did finalize this month some work on title research for the excess property items, or parcels of property that can be sold in the excess property sale, and I will be presenting those to the Building and Grounds Committee this month, so the full commission can take action on those, hopefully next month. Other than that, that, that's about the extent of the update.
Great, thank you. Next item, monthly meeting schedule.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we have craft meetings at six o'clock at night.
I'll say it later.
About thirty.
Mr. Lewis has made a motion that we amend our times from the current alternating to all-night meetings, six p.m., second of Mr. Brown, any discussion?
I was going to ask, what about the people who work at night, if you come in the morning of this month and they can't attend the meeting?
I think that the majority of people now in the community would prefer night meetings, the one that I've spoken with, but again, I'm speaking only from my perspective, and we would leave that open to the rest of it, and more importantly, looking at the composition of the commission now, you've gotten more and more folks here that are working during the day, just a thought. Mr. Gallow.
Are we going to leave this on the third Monday of each month?
Yes, the, the date would be the same unless you have a different... Mr. Lewis?
I'll be...
Third Monday of each month, six p.m., continuous. However, there will have to be some adjustments made to the number of meetings, because we've got a budget issue right now with commission, and that'll have to be addressed later. We've already had two special call meetings, so we've basically had two more meetings thus far this fiscal period than we should have, and we'll have to make those adjustments going forward based on calendar and agenda. So, any other discussion?
This is sort of, it's a common note in some people, and some people it's not, if you have a mild at night. You know, I, I can go either way, but it seems like, you know, the way it is, we've got high for meetings at night and high during the day, we are giving everybody an opportunity to attend. That's just my view.
Point well taken, but you've got to keep in mind also, look at city council, they continuously, regularly have theirs at six p.m., and most of the other county commissions across the first Tennessee Development District have theirs, as Natchitoches County has always had an evening meeting, and they feel that that best serves the most people. But again, it's your call. Any other discussion? Mr. Meehan.
What was the basic rationale for changing the alternate that we've had in place for the last few years?
Mr. Lewis, you made the motion, sir.
Okay, Mr. Meehan, a lot of people have to work for late, and it's daytime, okay? Now, most, most of these commissioners here don't have jobs during daytime, and it's a, if you don't work, you don't get any money. Now, you work for school department or sheriff's department, you take off, you're paid anyway, but a lot of them don't. So I think, and I have talked to my colleagues, my district, and they take six o'clock if they prefer for a meeting coming, it's your specialty for six o'clock, rather than nine o'clock in the morning. So, that's my reason for making this motion, I think six o'clock is more convenient for what people, okay?
I didn't say it was okay, but...
Well, you'll tell us after a minute, Mr. Meehan, is there any other comment?
I want to point out something before we get to the votes.
Okay. Mr. Tester?
I'd like to say, would you like to, if I, every day, I can, I couch me on, we will be... If I, every day meeting, I can, that costs me money, and we don't get paid anywhere, we do not. You check our books, it's an open way. We do not get paid.
Are you going to say it, or are you paying?
No, we're already paying, we're not going to be sat there. If I'm out of work, and I don't have sick time vacation, and I don't have time for something, well, it comes off my check. We're on Saturday, we do not get paid anywhere. Every meeting we have during the day, it comes off my account.
I'm on the high track, and I don't get any money either. When I work in the school system, I get my money back to the county, and I didn't accept that.
Mr. Attorney, you wanted to weigh in on this?
Yes, sir, as far as the decision, it is certainly up to the commission what, what time you wanna meet. I did attempt to locate the resolution that was passed, if there wasn't a resolution passed, setting the current alternating schedule, and I was not able to get my hands on that today. But I will say that state law, specifically TCA 55104, requires regular meetings of each county legislative body shall be held at a time, day, and place set by resolution of each legislative body. Certainly not a resolution prepared tonight. I would suggest that a, a simple voice vote, a roll call vote is not good enough. I believe we need a resolution to be passed. State law just requires four meetings each year, it's always required by state law. So obviously, it'll be up to you all how often and at what time you wanna meet, but I believe that needs to be done and adopted in a resolution.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, will you amend your motion to ask the attorney to draft a resolution to that schedule?
Yes, sir.
Night meetings only?
Yes, sir.
Motion made to Mr. Lewis, and Mrs. Brown had already done that. So the motion is to have the county attorney draft a resolution, bring it back next month for setting the schedule going forward at 6:00 P.M. meetings.
Each month.
Each month. And then, of course, with the understanding that there will be adjustments going forward, okay? Last year, there were several months that we didn't have a meeting, and I think that was a call of the chair, okay? And that's the way we'll do it going forward here as well. So, any other discussion on this matter, does everyone understand them? The motion. The motion is for the county attorney to draft a resolution changing the meeting time of this county commission from an alternating schedule to a 6:00 P.M. time every month. A set 6:00 P.M. schedule, any other questions?
Is it possible to put that out to, for public input to that priority?
I don't think that's required. Legislative, okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam Court, call and roll. Mr. Peters, she didn't hear you.
Willie Campbell.
No.
Jerry Prophet. Nancy Brown, yes. Mike Hill.
Aye.
Al Mehan.
No.
Ronnie Trivitt.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon.
Yes, sir.
Elsie Tester.
Yes.
Isaiah Bryant-Stash.
Yes.
Danny Ward.
Yes.
Ross Garland.
Yes.
Timothy Holden.
Aye.
Bobby Dees.
No.
Randall Jenkins.
Yes.
Larry Miller.
Yes.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Ray Lyons.
Aye.
Tommy Cullen.
No.
Scott Simley.
Yes.
Cody McQueen.
Aye.
Robert Carroll.
Aye.
Robert Robb.
Aye.
Six noes, and there's no more.
Six noes with a bounce to your eye, motion passes, now that brings up one other question. What about next month's meeting? Do you want that to be at 9:00 a.m. or 6:00 P.M.? I have a motion made by Mr. Lewis, second to Ms. Brown, any other discussion? November meeting.
It appears to me that since the resolution hasn't been approved, that we're next to the schedule.
Attorney, could this commission not amend that schedule, and that's what they're doing?
Well, no, as I just said, I think that amendment needs to be by resolution. So I, I think you're stuck with next month's set time until such time as the resolution's passed.
Okay, with that being said, motions are not proper, next month, no way out of it, 9:00 a.m. meeting. Okay, Commissioner comments? Well, we've got a half a dozen people all at once, we'll start here in front, Mr. Peters.
I'd like to defend myself, there was some public comments made that I somehow broke the law back during our budget process, earlier in July, I suppose. During that process, I did amend the recommendation of the Budget Committee. I conferred with our attorney, I conferred with our finance director, I conferred with the chairman of the Budget Committee. Before I made that motion, I was told by the attorney that, that would be improper, because in his opinion, and it's on record, that the attorney general's opinion was just an opinion, which our attorney at that time told me he disagreed with. He told that in court, that he didn't agree with his opinion. Okay, I made the recommendation, or the motion, the motion carried. The majority of the Budget Committee voted for my change. So I just wanna set the record straight, that I didn't break any laws, I didn't have any intention of breaking laws. And I, I conferred with all the proper people before I made my motion, I just wanna set that straight.
Mr. Ward?
Okay, I don't know, is it all meeting, I apologize, there's a few things I want to say. Everybody's coming today, and it's important to us, because without you guys, we don't have this. And there's one particular organization that never gets any credit, I want, Mr. Garland, it's what I'm saying, that we could be the Carter County District Board, they've been there for making that we've had in the last little month. And I think we need to recognize them for showing their support to our commission.
Okay.
Second of all, I'd like to talk about Mike Hill for a second. He, when I was on, Mr. Rumpel, he managed to make thirteen hundred dollars this weekend for one of our school systems banning their uniforms. He did this all the time, and a lot of men feel for doing this, I mean, he set it up, and they got out, they made thirteen hundred dollars, which is great. If we all just start working together on a lot, and those is community, then I think it would be a better place.
Can I, can I respond to that? Are you finished, Mr. Ward?
Well, I have more, something I want to say, is I think we, as a body, need to advance the electronic roll call system. So, our meetings won't be so long, because that's a long time.
Sir, I agree with that wholeheartedly, I made that recommendation almost four years ago. Roll call program, talk with the people down in Hawkins County, they have it in operation, it costs them nothing. But that's up to the clerk, it's her responsibility to call and roll, and I think it would be great to have electronic system. And you could do that with the right cooperation, with the right relationship with the community at zero cost. So I can give you that information, I can pass it along to your current clerk. Okay, anything else? Mr. Hill.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I didn't do that all by myself, there was band parents that organized the event. I just kinda threw a little support behind it, and it was pretty cool. We had, uh, we had a newly elected school board member who was out there busking for tests with us. Dr. Ward came by for a while and, and helped. And it was, it was a genuine community effort, and we met the people out there in the middle of the highway, and it was pretty well received, and I, I think gestures like this are, are important to, to kinda boost morale. We raised enough for about six band uniforms, so it was, it was very successful.
Thank you, any other comments? Mr. Tester.
I'd like to say that there's been a lot of discussion about how we did the budgets, it's in the John City Press, it was in the Star. And I talked to the compterels office, and this thing really got blown out of proportion. I know we didn't do right, and I know that, you know, and I hate to see us as a community that we've done for the last two years, would have three, three and a half months of work, and come in and lump that down, and then from the floor. And I can't, because, maybe you can, but me sitting here on the floor throwing the tax rate up and trying to vote on it, you can't see the whole picture, you can't, you know. So, so I'm not saying what we did, I'm not trying to go, but I got the compterels office, they seemed, and I asked them, I said, "Okay, we could be fine, who's gonna prosecute us?" God, you know, if somebody goes, "Charles, they have to prosecute her." And she, I said, "Do you come up here from Nashville and prosecute us?" They said, "No, that's up to your local district attorney's office." Well, I don't see that happening, he could have, but I don't see that happening. But also, in the party side of this, I think this A-1 act is a little outdated from our use today. They recommended for us to, we need to change this thing about, or they, they, they sit down there, and we need to send some information to our elected officials in Nashville and get them to take this out of this thing of having our budget in by July. Because I also asked, I talked to the compterels office, how many counties get that in, and she said, "Almost none of them." It's not a big, we, we played a bigger deal on this end of the county than they did in Nashville about what we did with our budget. I'm not saying we were right in it, but it, I think the whole situation got blown out of proportion. And I made a bigger deal than what it, what it really was. And looking forward, I'd like for us, maybe November is, is to get some stuff to the night, and pop that into the press and get them to remove that, that we have to have that budget in, uh, in July, because anytime you're forced to make decisions, you don't usually make the right decisions. And, and I know, and, you know, and, and the simple reason is, and time's passed, election year, we never pass the budget to, to, to the local members. If you're not stopping anybody from running, you know, everybody looks after their own budget. And, and, you know, because, so I'd like to, I won't do it tonight, but for us to think ahead and, and, and talk about state legislatures, if I can, then take that out, or, or at least it must be September each year to have a budget in place.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trivitt.
I've missed the county commission before. When they say you're gonna have the budget in July the thirty-first, all these other counties around here don't do it. You can set the penalty tax rates as safe as it is, and keep on operating like that, the baby bills for the mother, so. Irwin, Utah, always counties that dated this year, so there's no deadline on it, July the first, thirty-first.
There is, Mr. Trivitt, if you're a nineteen eighty-one county, which we are.
Yeah, I know.
It, that, that timeframe is clearly outlined. And just to respond, Mr. Tester, with all due respect, we have taken action each year outside the statute. Did you get your letter on October the third from Mr. Justin Wilson?
I did, that's why I called.
And, and the compterels office said that we had not used good business practice. We have violated statute, we have an anti-opinion to that. And I wouldn't say that the District Attorney won't take this up, because there have been lots of people that have made that commitment, that they will approach the District Attorney. Whether they have or not, I don't know. But, you know, we've got the viol, we've got to operate within the statute, and that's what this mayor's been telling you for two years. And so, we just need to continue and use good business practice, as the compterel has recommended. We need to comply with the request that was given to us, and we need to use good business practices. Ms. Culler.
I've forewarned you, I've been bringing this forward, I know it's in our package, we're missing several minutes, and I think that is what I'm getting ready to say, I know we're saving some money, at least four hundred dollars, because of that pile in the landfill, he didn't get it. And I'd like to take fifty dollars of that money for each committee and secretary. Somebody in this building, if you can put a word out, just ask them. I, it takes away from the minute, the meeting, and we divide, and try to figure out what's going on. We have paid the orders, I think somebody in this building would like to earn fifty dollars for two minutes for each committee. And I'd like to bring that up, and I'll bring it to the budget committee.
So you bring it to the budget, but you've gotta keep in mind also, Ms. Culler, that in years past, we've always had secretaries within the committees, and that's what the bylaws as currently on the books state. And the reason that we don't have all those minutes in, these were organizational meetings, and it's just taken a little while for these people to come up to speed. But I know that Mr. Garland submitted his today, he did an excellent job with his, and I think all the other secretaries at this point in time are gonna comply as well.
I don't think anyone had any longer than I do, with two nonary acquiesces, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Brown, I think you had something you wanted to say?
Yes, we brought it to budget committee, it did pass, but I think normally we've got the budget issues that we've got right now. I think, I'd like to make a motion to have CTS come in and do a study of our budget process. And any recommendation they can give us, I'd be tickled to have, because God knows we can use the help of this.
Have a motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
Second to Mr. Lewis, to have CTS come in and do a evaluation of our budget within the county.
That's a sad English face, she, she pays her, she does what she should do, and she may recommend regulations as well, so nobody will come up here and tell us what she's doing.
This is... Folks, Ms. Brown, Mr. Tester, you're out of order. We have a motion on the floor in a second, is there any other professional, reasonable discussion on the matter? Seeing none, Madam Court, call and roll, please.
Peter Peters.
No.
Willie Campbell.
Absolutely, no.
Jerry Prophet.
Yes.
Nancy Brown.
Yes.
Mike Hill.
No.
Al Mehan.
No.
Ronnie Trivitt.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon.
Yes.
Elsie Tester.
No.
Isaiah Bryant-Stash.
Thanks.
Danny Ward.
No.
Ross Garland.
No.
Timothy Holden.
No.
Bobby Dees.
No.
Randall Jenkins.
No.
Larry Miller.
Yes.
John Lewis.
Yes.
Ray Lyons.
No.
Tommy Cullen. Scott Simley.
No.
Cody McQueen.
Aye.
Robert Carroll.
Aye.
Robert Robb.
Aye.
Has anyone changed their vote?
Mr. Harland, I was not out of the room, I was not out of the room.
Have a seat.
First thing, no.
Have a seat. One last positive note, Mr. Gary Smith, if you would please stand up. Mr. Smith is our new EMA Director, this man's on call 24/7, he's done an excellent job. So if you would please, get an opportunity, go by and see him, talk to him, get a little better idea of what he does and what he has for the county.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second, all in favor?